Good evening, everyone. It's now 6:00 p.m., Monday, August 21st, 2023, and the Baywatch City Council Work Session will now come to work. Let's do the plate of the
...... flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eddie, would you please help out?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Belinda Livingstone.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notera.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Present.
City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
And Councilmember Mike Zabel was unable to attend.
Thank you, Eddie. Let's just move right on into Agenda Item Number One. This is review the stormwater improvement project plans. We have a presentation about Gemini Engineering and Sciences Incorporated. Just so everyone knows, this agenda was placed by City Manager. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'm Larry Flutie. I'm an engineer with Gemini. And with me tonight, I won't introduce themselves, but I have Barbara and Justina. And they're engineers. They actually are the ones that put the plans together. So between the three of us, we've got the answers and what we're bodying. And then, of course, what comes out tonight, we'll be able to continue and prepare to talk. Okay. Well, starting out, we'll review the plans and then answer any questions you might have. And then we can go into, well, I think, the construction costs. We go through that. Can you?
Everybody should have a set phone. Did you bring a magnifying glass for your question? He's gonna zoom in.
Beautiful, thank you. Well, they start off at Ninth Street. And on that project street, we're proposing to mill and repave.
What sheet is that on?
C1. It's like four or five in there.
C1, guys.
Yes.
All right.
It's... ... Oh, yeah, sorry.
I don't see page numbers. Oh, there they are.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm C1. All right. Here every time, everybody, time to get here.
There we go. Everybody good?
Yeah, the... Well, it's easy when I'm on the computer screen. So, anyway, on Ninth Street, the project is to mill and repave from the main road around to Ninth Street, the harbor, and then up to the cul-de-sac here by the building. And so we're not proposing rebuilding the entire road, but just repaving the asphalt and the base itself looks good. So we'll be keeping that, replacing the curb. And then, the project, what we're doing is, if you look in the... This point in the cul-de-sac, or the elbow, where there's north on Harbor Drive, we're proposing to fit some inlets on there and also further up to the park. So we'll be doing some improvement. But what's happening here, because the reason the water's falling not so high, particularly on high tide and rain events, is this area, though, certainly, is a low area. So the street comes down to this point in each direction. So we've got flow coming on both directions. And it's puddling there. So what our plan is, is try to capture the water before it gets there and allow the water to overflow, particularly when the tide's up so much, you know, try to get a surface overflow to an outlet at the... Actually, the pond down here, where discharge is out to a little swell, to a little swell at the outlet there. I'll go to the next sheet. And we can see that we're proposing two new inlets here. That's the existing outfall for Palm. So these inlets, right now, no water's captured on that road. So we'll be able to capture it here before it gets down to Ninth Street. And the... But also seeing that during the survey, you know, the inlet problem. The inlet that's up at this cul-de-sac here is full of silt, sand, and so it's not working hard. So part of the work will be clearing that and clearing the discharge out so that the water that's accumulated at the end, at this end of the cul-de-sac, will be able to discharge where it was intended to go. And then the water, as it travels down the curving towards Ninth, will be intercepted by the inlets there at the Palm discharge wall. Putting in this additional inlet there at Ninth Street, we'll put some inlets there. And we'll be putting in an additional inlet by... So this will take care of getting water that can discharge unless it flows, it comes to this point that it has a way out. Now, during periods of high tide, it may not work as well, but it will work. So since this is kind of a little ball that we're trying to deal with. So that's the... What we're proposing there. Then additionally, there's a curb inlet that doesn't have this kind of close over. We'll put in a great top inlet there so that surface water can get to it and can get into the pipe system and discharge out. I think that would be pretty much the items that we can take care of, barring doing regrading of this cul-de-sac here again, the rain. But that would be pretty prohibitive. And we figured this, I think, will help. And I think that it intercepts the water and then alleviate what's happening down here when the tide's up and when it rains. I think that would be a better, a bigger benefit than it is now.
Yeah. Looks like on that top plan view that you have up there, as well as the bottom, there's some additional information on your drawing that we have? Some shading that I don't know if they're representing to see it from here. But clearly, that's... So you're still on C1, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So it looks like there's some additional information, some drawing differential there? And then what we have?
Yeah, it looks like driveways are being rebuilt down on yours and they're not on ours. That's the first thing that we noticed.
Ah, okay.
It's probably the way that it ran versus...
I don't think so. I mean, that's... The working printers are trying to get this out. You know, when you want something done, you know how...
I understand.
But it's there. We will make sure on the PDFs of the plans that we give out and print out, that all of that is clear.
Okay, so I was listening. Obviously, you're adding several inlets. How many total are you adding?
We're adding one, two, three, four.
Four, okay. And how many are all Ninth?
We got one, two.
Two, okay. That's four we should have had all this time. In the history of the city, we've never had a proposal like that, so... Frank?
Yeah, you're talking about raising the grade on the cul-de-spoon. Right now, on high tide and bad rain, that water action floods from Seventh, Eighth through the easement into Ninth Street, this other pitch. So we couldn't really raise that because then you'd be pushing more water back into Eighth and Seventh Street. We're putting, as you said, two more inlets in?
Yeah.
What are they gonna really do if the water's already backed up?
Trying to get the water that's in the little spot out as quickly as we can.
Yeah, I understand it. But if it's high tide, you could put twenty in.
No, here.
It's a flow out. Is there any thought process of putting, like, a catch basin pump in there? Is that...
It'd be finding a place to put it.
You could probably put it right in that circle there. You could put it near a tank in there. And what I'm saying is...
You're talking about a below-rain tank?
Yes. What I'm saying is, these pipes are 75 years old. Probably.
Yeah.
And the system never really worked 75 years ago.
Right.
And concrete has a life expectancy of 75 years and it's deteriorating. And that's not count salt water contamination that may have broken.
Do you realize those pipes have 125 years? Are any four of the engineers aware of that now?
Oh, I understand that. I mean, I dug tree trunks in Philadelphia that were still being used 10 years or 20 years ago. So they're hollowed out. What I'm saying is, when a stormwater pipe is in there, especially salt water, it contaminates faster and it's terrible. Cores have been broken, reworked, contaminated, damaged. But what I'm saying is, if we're gonna replace a system that really doesn't work, I would look at a system... I'm not talking about every street. Maybe we should do a front end tub with Ninth Street, you know?
Right. Okay. Well, you know, that's the thing that's really kind of bugging me is that this is dating back, you know, trying to, what can we do, you know, with the water and causing the tide to damage it? And adding in another inlet? I can see what good is that gonna do if we still have the same problem? And I think looking at, or look at the below-rain, what additional storage would be? Oh, really? That needs to be down at that bottom, that cul-de-sac. That needs to come up. So is there a way we can raise that? In other words, not doing any interference with the existing driveways and still getting in there?
And that's what I'm saying. You raise that, but you have another problem down the road.
Yeah. Well, we don't want to create a problem. But would that work? And if it works, then that's a good policy. And how do we implement that? And I would say that would be more advantageous to look at than putting in another inlet. So I agree with you there. I don't know about underground tank. I had to look closer at how can we make that work?
Has your firm ever done pumps, underground catches?
Yes. The... So that needs to be taken look at as well. We'll get back and let you know.
Okay. Let me ask you one more question about just this particular street. Have... Obviously, whenever you look at, you're trying to design something that was cost-effective with a problem.
Right.
You can't solve it all because we are right next to the issue.
Right.
But did you take into consideration what happens to the other neighborhoods like Frank? If you could create a problem that you just think somewhere else? Okay, you fixed this problem, it's not flooding anymore, but now somebody else's house is now actually underwater?
Yes.
Okay.
The... That's really our concern. We don't want to cause or push the law down the road on the problem. We need to take care of the problem.
And that's the answer I was looking for. I just wanted a little verification.
Sure.
Other questions about Ninth Street?
John, on Ninth Street, has there already been a time in the recent history where we did replace the pipes?
No, pipes, no, I've been replacing them.
So we're not recommending to change any of the pipes on Ninth Street right now?
No.
Why is that?
Because they're all in good condition at this point.
Yeah, they're in good condition and they... Their capacity is what's needed, so they're not under capacity.
So we already videoed all the pipes on Ninth Street?
We... I think...
Yeah.
Did you guys video the thing or do it on?
I know, only outside, at the outfall, you know, a bunch of particles that need to be cleaned up. I had to check to see if you got... I can't recall Ninth Street on the top of my head if we had it.
The reason why I'm bringing that up is because we did a project on 12th and 13th Street.
Yeah.
And found out that we had big problems.
Yeah.
And it was dramatically higher and more expensive than what we anticipated. But if it solves the problem, then we consider it worth it. So we just want to make sure that if they're... If you're recommending not replacing the pipes that they have, they're thoroughly inspected and we have nothing to worry about.
Right.
How old are those pipes in here? How old are the pipes, do you know?
They're quite old. I mean, they're... These pipes down here, I think the construction plans are like late 60s, early 70s.
Well, I was born in the early 60s and I fall apart.
Yeah.
Al, do you have anything you want to add on this one?
Yeah, I'll get you there. And I think certainly we'll take a look at what we know, the videos of Seventh Street. Make sure that the pipe is okay and that it needs to be replaced and we'll make that recommendation.
Yeah, we did look at the possibility of trying to increase the size, but what they discovered with the elevations is this piece of pipe that runs from the western side of Ninth Street down to the cul-de-sac area is very, very flat. So there's not much room to put anything larger in there. Because we were talking about the head pressure on the valve itself and trying to make sure that didn't help. And, you know... And we did determine that one of the most crucial things in this location of the system is that that valve just continues to work. Because if you look at some of the elevations right down in the cul-de-sac, they're like two feet and change, which is extremely low. So it doesn't take very much for the tide to come back and start filling that area with water.
Right.
Another thing I don't think was mentioned was that we are planning to install a check valve at the outfall, at the swell. Because we have noticed over time that the retention pond fills from the swell and maxes up into the sewer and spruce. So that is on the plans as well.
So that's over here?
That is the swell.
Right.
Right over there, and it runs into that system.
Any more questions?
Right, right, you're talking now.
What is the point? What's that? None of you saying right? Yeah, disappointing.
Yes.
Just some general statements. So when we did videoing, we... Somebody came out here. They videoed. They gave us their product. They gave us was the results of the videoing. I would feel a lot more comfortable if they gave us a report that basically said, "This is what we found," a written report, "and here's our recommendation." Because I still believe the expenditures that we went through on 12th and 13th Streets did not need to be as high as they were. You're probably more familiar than I am with repairs that can be done to the joints. If you have gasket failures, there are companies out there that specialize in that. I don't know how many of you guys made these, went out there and took a look. I looked at the pipe that was pulled out of the ground. It looked great to me, most of it, from 12th and 13th Street.
I looked at a lot of those.
Well, they broke them, of course, when they pull on the ground. So I'd like to have the video firm supply us again with a written report saying, "This is what we found at X distance." And at the end of it, here's what we recommend with respect to either replacing pipe or repairing pipe. Because clearly, if we can get by with a significant decrease in expenditures to repair the pipes, if there's some gasket failures out there, there are companies that specialize in that, who come around it, the inside and the outside. You're probably familiar with those, I would hope, where they take care of those as long as the pipe is structurally sound. And from what I saw, the pipe we took down on 12th and 13th, structurally sound, most of it. So, you know, again, all you need is a little bit of a gasket failure at the joint and suddenly starts pouring in there. It's underneath the road, you know, big puddle, sewage area, things like that. People think, "Wow, the pipe must have collapsed." You know? Not necessarily. Could be a simple gasket failure that could have been replaced from the inside and the outside. The pipe was structurally sound. Saves the city a lot of money. If it can last another 50 or 60 years, that's a long time.
Yeah. I think, you know, in reviewing the videos, we got pipes that are really encrusted with particles. Some look pretty good and not a whole lot of changes.
What would be helpful for us? We're gonna kind of get a spruce...
Yeah.
... your presentation.
Sure.
What might be helpful is if you have video recordings of each street that we discuss, it'd be nice to put them someplace where we can actually just take a look. Because normally, you'll see, you know, they'll put little diagrams up there. "Oh, here's a problem. Here's a failure. Here's a crack. Here's a seam messing up." And then that way, whenever we're voting on this, then we know whether we need to activate it. The council will have more information. And really, you don't know what you don't know. It's just going on what you're saying, but this council likes to see things.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't blame you. The, you know, we have videos, but we don't have them on all the streets. So we have to look at that and do that. I would feel much better if I could see what it is that we're doing. If it's in good shape. And if you don't have to do a lot, then let's just do what's necessary. If it's in there and it's good, that's great. We've got ways of fixing those and besides slip lining and internal bands and brackets. And then you can externally, if there's access and not a lot of vegetation, go down and drought some palm or some kind of a clue that's sealed as well. So... Okay. All right.
Any other comments on Ninth Street?
Okay.
All good? All right. Please continue, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, the other... Next group of three streets will show you the ones that are behind here. So there's Cedar and Spruce and Palm. And those streets, these three streets, which are on sheets... We can follow up to the next sheets, but those three sheets were mill and replacing the curb. So there's no drainage needed, but that's... That's from the gentleman's sheet.
All right. Any other questions about any of those?
Yeah, I know they do have some backflow problems coming over that I did in the Citizens Contact. When I first came on board, it was the gentleman that called me. And again, high tide, boom, comes back this way, goes to the pond and then backs off. And I don't remember what street it was. I think it was probably Cedar.
Oh, Cedar.
And then the water comes up into that cul-de-sac and just sits there, of course, until the high tide goes down. And then it comes back out again. So obviously, we don't have, you know, a concrete outfall there that we can put a check valve on there, right?
That's connected to the swell I was talking about with the check valve. So it all runs through the same system. It did improve when we dredged out the retention pond.
Okay.
But having a check valve at the alcohol swell will...
Will stop that retention water. Okay.
Do you alter that swamp?
Into the retention pond, kind of sorts of...
Yeah. So on high tide, the check valve would stop that.
That's the one over on Ninth Street, so... Any other questions or comments? This is pretty straightforward. Ken?
All right. The next sheet, we'll start on 14th. And 14th were mill and repave along with the curb. And leaving the... Leaving the inlets. And the pipe there is to remain.
The pipe's what, I'm sorry?
The pipe. The existing pipe?
Mm-hmm.
Those are... Those seem to be okay, but we want to verify that.
Okay, good.
We talked about them. And so those pipes and those inlets will leave those in place and maybe it's mill.
All right. Kyle, is there any questions or comments or discussions about the center of the cul-de-sac? I know that this comes out from time to time. And I didn't know that the residents had a problem with the median, whatever you want to call it, little island in the cul-de-sac. You know, occasionally that does come up.
Yeah, we had that on Harrison, I remember, where we kind of came up with a solution. Not on any of these, on 14th and 18th, have I heard any issue with what we had was asked, which we've done on 15th, is kind of cleaned it up, put some more drought tolerant plants in there and some rocks to try to prevent certain trucks from trying to drive.
Is there a general feeling we want to keep this thing or have you... Do we even know?
I haven't heard one way or the other, but I don't...
It seems to me that it probably would be a bad idea to ask the residents in that cul-de-sac if they still want it or not. Because if we're doing this, now is the time to change it. Is that correct?
Yes.
So thoughts on that?
I mean, it would be more expensive, but...
Do you think it'd be way more expensive or would it just be a little more expensive? It's not huge, is it?
Why would you want it?
Well, every time that we have this conversation, there's always someone who gets shackled with their driveway. I don't know what it's like here. What happened over on Harrison was the driveway was uphill. And big trucks would come in and they can't make it around this feature. And so what happens is they get so far in the back of it and their bumper hits the front of it. Now, that may not be the case here, but it could very well be that there's no issue at all. But I think if we're... As long as we're doing this and we're gonna churn it all up anyway, let's make sure that they're really happy with it. If we don't need it, then that just makes it easier in the future.
Eric? It's Jody. Can I say something?
Yes.
Why would we create an issue that's not an issue right now? It's not... Part of our strategic plan is beautification and paving over landscape areas. I don't think it's part of our strategic plan. And if no one's bringing the issue up, why would we?
Yeah, you're probably right. Wasn't there a resident? I'm not sure which street it was that he was complaining exactly what he said.
That Harrison.
No, I thought it was another one. See, I agree with Jody, but that's probably not a bad idea. They at least write down these neighborhoods that have this and just look at their driveway and see if it's chewed up. And if it's not, just don't worry about it, move on. But I actually had a couple of residents that were... A slight bickering over one of these features. And City Manager Reif remembers that problem. Again, I'm probably just overthinking it, but we might as well at least look at it and make sure that there's... We don't see evidence of trucks backing up and rolling on under the curb.
I think that was a... I think that was a, that's a traffic calming device. When you're driving down that road, you know, it slows you down. This is a good thing. You know, so you have to slow down to go around that turn. If there's nothing there, I mean, I just need to do all sorts of racing things from the end. Yeah. But you can't, I mean, I've gone down those streets many, many times, and because that item is there, whatever you want to call it, you, you just slow down. You definitely slow down as you're going around that circle, that cul-de-sac, and you come out the other end. You know, the biggest trucks that we continually have are the garbage trucks. I guess they must get around that thing fine.
The garbage trucks do fine.
Okay.
Because if they put a little more care, it's usually the trucks that aren't there every day that are the ones driving over. It's construction, construction.
Which doesn't happen, doesn't happen often, construction trucks, right? I mean, all this stuff's built out, and sure there's some things that go on, or somebody is paying for some work done in their garage or something, they couldn't have a larger vehicle there. But for the most part, it's the garbage trucks, and just like you said, they, they're careful, they go around that, and there's no issues. I get what you're saying, David, but once in a while, it might be a construction.
It's just a matter of riding by there and deciding whether it's really a problem or something we want to discuss further. And thank you, Ms. Livingston, for your point of view also.
May I add one more thing, it's Joey, actually.
Oh, is it Joey?
Is that?
I'm so sorry.
The resident at the end of Harrison that fought to keep the landscape ideal was fearful of people driving straight into her driveway because the road ends into her driveway. So it does, although it might solve some potential issue where a truck turn around, it does give people direct access into those driveways in the cul-de-sac. Just something that they have often felt.
That's true, and, and the, the solution we came up with on your street was to actually just reduce the size a little bit to give trucks a little more room to make that turnaround. Anything else on this street? All right. Please continue, sir.
Okay, 15th Street.
Just a quick note on 14th Street, that the, from the north inlet out to the seawall is lined with the curb place. So that.
Right.
That has been repaired. It's gonna hold up well for a long time. And the nice thing about the curb place is we don't see the particles accumulating on the plastic as, as fast as they do on the concrete.
So how long was that done?
How long was it done in 2008, or 2010, or 2011?
And we have video of that as well.
Thank you. Okay, now.
Okay, 15th Street. On 15th, again, we're, we're milling, repainting, and from the main road down to the cul-de-sac. And here, here we're supposed to clean barnacles out of the pipes and leaving the existing pipe in as it is, is, and, and the existing inlets, those will be remaining in place as well.
Okay.
So this, this is primarily a mill repick.
We talked about each inlet on, on these streets, the ones, they're in good condition and there's not any signs of, of flow issues. So that's the reason I'm really not necessaried to change it to the correct style anymore.
Because one of the benefits that we found with the newer race we put in was a lot of the debris, you know, was going down into the pipes as opposed to the newer race we put in, it prevented that. But then sometimes that gets plugged up right there, degrade, but you guys maintain it.
Yeah, as long as it's maintained, there's a gentleman that lives, the lower one, the lower inlet, and his driveway is completely desolate at times.
What, is it flooded?
I, I don't know yet.
The residents should clean those out themselves too.
I've seen residents that put down all the tree trappings.
On top there.
Which is brilliant.
Anything else on this one?
That's it, we'll go on to 16th. 16th, that one dead is in two parts, but it's again, it's a mill repaid and replacing the curb, the curb. Existing pipes and their inlets, they, they remain as is. So pretty much like 14th.
Okay.
Any questions or comments on that one?
17th Street, again, mill repaid, repaid and curb replacement, leaving the pipe in place and also the, the inlets, leaving those in place, and pretty much repaying and replacing the curb as well.
So this ain't ever getting close to my street, which is the most important street of this whole project, so.
Oh, we got a lot of stuff.
Did we pull that street?
Can I ask a question? This is, this is Joey, can I ask a question?
Yes. I'm sorry, I can't see, I can't see you on the screen or anything, so I'm just having, just chiming whenever you like.
Yeah, I can bring my hand if no one's paying attention, so, sorry. But where we're leaving the inlets as they consist, is there any way to add a grate to stop like the palm prongs from flowing into them? That's question number one. Question number two is, will we be replacing any of the concrete covers to them because many of those are failing?
For the ones that we're replacing, that'd be a brand new inlet with a great type top. The ones that are remaining, we've looked at, we think if they're damaged, then of course we would replace that inlet. If they're not damaged, then we've just left it, left it in and utilized it.
But how do you determine whether one is ready to be replaced or not? But was the, just, I'm curious.
Visual inspection.
Corrosion or?
Well, you know, they're concrete, you know, these tops, so they'll, they'll last for a while, but if they look like they're spalling, you know, maybe the rebar is getting rusting and expanding, and you'll see the cratch and you'll see the red loops coming out of it, but that's, we'd look for that. If it looks like it's like a fresh, not fresh, but a, a fourth piece of concrete with no damage, then pretty much it's, it's intact.
Okay. We had ones on 12th, 13th that actually collapsed, right into the inlet.
Oh, did they?
Something that I was, was, is that a no on the grate being added? Are you getting an answer to that?
On, I'll see, I'd like to, I'd like to make sure, did you say that again, please?
Is there any way to add a grate to these inlets that were leaving in place? They don't have grates, so we can eliminate some of the palm prongs and yard debris that closed in them.
Add, that's adding a grate at the existing inlet? So sort of replacing the concrete top with a grate top?
No, see, keeping the same style, like the curb style inlet, but putting some sort of grate to keep debris out of going into the box.
Okay. I'm, one of the short answers, yes, but I'm not sure of who, where we can find that, what, what's the dimensions? Can it work without replacing the box? That's, that's what, these things kind of piece together.
You'd have to pour a new box.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't want to have to pour a new box, but if, if there's no top that's going to fix it, then you have to pour a new box.
So 12th and 13th, they had grates?
They were, they were different styles. They had grates, kind of like a, almost a hybrid of a curb inlet and re-inlet, but the grates are so deteriorated, they're just falling through.
Okay, so you had to put the grates in.
We'd change them type.
And they're good.
The reason I ask is because some of these, the opening is large enough for a small child, small, like, there, there's extremely unsafe. It's, you know, we're talking about community safety, it's a problem. And I know it sounds kind of like a, like Larry, you kind of acted like that was a crazy statement, but anything can be done. You know, I'm doing a construction business, how we just bring someone out there and build it? It just isn't revealed, add a grate to something. But it's something we probably should look out for, for safety purposes.
Yeah, I agree with Joey, I think two things, it would be safety, I take my grandkids off of my street, walk across the street to the beach, and when we're going past that, I make a conscious effort to make sure that they are not even close to that. Because I have two, two-year-olds, and I'm confident if they fell, they would, they would go into that. They're small enough to fall into that. So I, so you're visualizing what we're talking about, there's some type of screen grate, for lack of a better term, that would just go over that, that would do two things, it would stop a lot of the palm prong stuff, you know, from going down in there from a maintenance stand. Do you see that closing, is there a problem?
So I should keep the openings big enough that it's not getting blocked up too easily by debris.
Right. But once that goes into the system and then goes into the pipes, does it ever get jammed up in there, which?
Typically, it's when the, the barnacle is filled up, it's the point that debris gets caught, wherever the pile up in the plug. I think the biggest inlets we have that are, they're not ours, but the county's in Baltimore, the biggest ones that a child would fall into.
Correct. But that would definitely happen, if we put some type of a grate over that, it would stop, it would stop debris right there, similar to like the new rates that we put in on 12th and 13th Street that you guys have to go around after a big storm and make sure you're cleaning that off, otherwise the grate just gets blocked. Right?
Yeah, and I've seen that kind of design where they put some kind of grate in front of the opening curb inlet.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think the goal is, it's, it's okay to have the clean out of grate, but it's not okay to have the clean out of pipe.
Right? I agree. Yeah. So right now, a lot of that stuff is going into the system.
Right, a lot of it, a lot of it does come out, but yeah, that's, we, usually when you get that built up enough that it gets a full plug from like organic material, branches or something, that's when you make that back up. And then typically what we do is the amount of trucks has to come out and.
Correct.
Plast it.
Okay. So we just, we just contract that out, have to just take care of it? The county has to do that for us, or do they?
No.
Okay.
No, that's, they do.
Maybe we can steal it.
Any other questions or comments?
Can we just take another look at those grates and maybe try to, wherever we're doing improvements, look at, turn them uniform throughout the city? I know on Harrison, there, there's one that's a huge, I mean, there's gotta be eighteen inches or greater than even a hand would bound it if there was a heavy, you know, rainstorm. And, you know, I know we're not focusing on Harrison, but I was saying up there, if we're on Harrison, there's a lot of them many throughout the city, maybe take a sample of those inlet boxes and grates. We're, we're doing this, let's do it right, so we don't have an issue.
Yeah, one of the issues that we may run into is if, whenever you're trying to install, permanently install a piece of hardware like that into an older drain, it may start crumbling and cracking. So it would have to be some kind of a higher device that's so ready to just lay it on it and so, I don't know what would be the answer, but I think you understand what it is, and she'd recommend, and I think everyone agrees with, that's probably something we should do.
I think, yeah, I think we can put together some options of whether we're, you know, finding a device that go be thrown in it, what that would cost versus changing the box out itself, and then you can line up what the, the cost of all that would be.
So those drains that go right there and go fully, so those are, those are owned by the county?
Yeah, yes.
So if we ask them to, they could probably take that on, right? I mean, they're, they're idiots.
Yes, so.
We say we want a safety reason, we want these things taken care of.
Well, this is, this is two, two completely separate projects. One is, you've got something that you would like to see resolved in the county owns, and then the rest of it is what we're trying to resolve tonight. And whatever we come up with, we may not get the same solution from the county, but we can certainly ask. Anything else on 17th Street? Vice Mayor, are you okay with that?
Yes, I just actually have all that covered in all, no issues.
Okay. Okay, 18th Street. 18th Street, same work, milled and replaced and repaid, replaced the, the curb. And here, at the end, at the cul-de-sac, we're, we're replacing the inlets and also the, huh? We're also removing an existing check valve there as well.
What's the purpose of that? Why, why are we removing the check valve?
Well, I think it's more of a case of relocating, much more than just removing it. And I think that the issue is, the city is saying, when we have the check valve in at the inlet, the, it doesn't stop the barnacle growth and the debris on the downstream end, and they would prefer to have the, those check valves out on the seawall.
Okay, so I see that, so you're effectively removing the check valve.
Exactly.
And the, the reason it's in the box right now is because the pipe that's sleeved at the seawall, it's, it's a metal corrugated pipe that is falling apart, and it's just impossible to get that out in there, the way that the actual outfall is shaped. So we put one in the box to prevent the title backflow, but it'd be much more beneficial when they have it to repair the, the outfalls so that the valve can replace the end of the pipe. And that, it also gives you more holding capacity for the inlet.
And that's also a good point, is that there's an outfall set up, we are replacing, this being one of, where the CMP pipe is just fully corroded, so they'll, they'll be replacing us in there. Then they would be in shape to take the check valve at that location.
Any questions or comments on 18th?
The, the long expanse pipe that's going from the south inlet to the seawall, that's going to get a slip line, because that one has been inspected out of infiltration.
Can you add what?
It, it's, it's damaged, so it is, it is leaking in to that pipe.
Yeah, that, that one there, we have, you know, finally to be slip line, you know, out from that inlet out to the seawall.
So on 18th Street, the only inlet that is there now is just one, right?
Two, there's two.
Okay, so that other one is existing? So it says, so the eighteen inch pipe that goes across the street there, that's already there as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that needs to be cleaned out, because the camera would not tell us all the debris needs to be cleaned out.
Okay.
Well, let me make one clarification, I'm glad you brought that up. It's a fifteen inch pipe now, we're gonna replace it with an eighteen inch.
Yeah, it says, oh, it's eighteen inch, right? Okay. Got it?
You asked, I thought you were gonna put the slip line in there.
No, that's.
The slip line will be from the last inlet down to the seawall.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on 18th?
It might, it may help just with that existing fifteen inch pipe, I'm drawing.
Okay.
So we know there's an existing pipe there, suppose it's replaced with an eighteen.
Yeah, the, part of the plans will be surveyed, the survey shows it as the fifteen.
Okay.
And, but we can add that note in there, and also refer to. And, but, uh, we can add that note in there, and also refer to the survey as well.
Okay.
Okay. Nineteenth Street, there were mill and repave, along with replacing the curb. And this is where it makes a job to do. And that's, the existing pipe will be remaining. And the inlets look okay, so those will be remaining as well.
Questions? So what about Bay Shore that connects Nineteenth and Twenty First? Is, is that being addressed at all? It looks like that was done...
That, that was newer asphalt and curving.
Yeah.
So, you know, that, that scored higher on our street than this.
Okay.
So we, you can see where we ended the asphalt, and it varies per street that's crossing Bay Shore. And that's been the, of the, the way that the damaged curb and asphalt that, you know, we took it to where it made sense to stop.
Got it.
So this one bends around on the Bay Shore though, just because that curb was damaged.
Yeah. That corner of the road. Okay. Which inch did you do?
Okay, Twenty First. On Twenty First, this one is a park as well, but it's mill, repave, and replacing the curb. There are no, no pipes on this, this stretch. And I think that's, that's pretty much it.
So it stops here, the pavement, just before it gets to, um...
Yeah, it stops before that, where the new pavement is.
Right.
I have a question. Some, most of these streets up in this, this area of L R P, they're not really, they're all gutter, they're, the street is leveled with grass, and then you've got concrete, maybe just a little bit. Is anything changing on that, or are we just doing the same thing you did?
Well, it, it's going to be the, the valley-type curving that's there, and so the, the edge of the curving, the concrete will be the edge of the pavement. So it'll look a little different, but, and there, depending on what the elevation is on the backside of that, between the curb and the lawn, there will probably be some siding that will have to be run there and make it, but it, it'll look, won't look like it is now, but it'll look like you see, you see the valley curve is there next to the road, and so...
Okay.
And especially down this east end of Nineteenth, because what we talked about is, the, the curb there is like flat concrete.
Yeah. I don't know what it is.
Well, that's, that's, that's the main difference.
It's pretty much a, a smurf sidewalk.
Yes. Ready for a next?
Yes.
Twenty First. Twenty First here is, we're doing mill and repaving and curb replacement.
No funding.
No funding. And, and then the plan at the end, you'll see some outfalls because of the pipe kind of in between the streets up in this area. And so we, at, at the end of these, we've got outfall plans that show up for those outfalls. Any questions or are you gone?
I think you can continue your...
Okay. Twenty Second?
I, I brought up Twenty Second. This is that southeast corner, when we mill and repave, it was, it's part of the curb that's sunk in and it kind of puddles more so than any other place. It's optional, but I thought of remembering out there, because it was brought up. When we did resurface, why we didn't do care of that slot.
Okay.
That, that's just...
Is that, okay, so it's sunk, and I'd be, I know it makes a puddle, and it actually covers more than half the street, it's not, is that the one that's all wrong?
Well, we'll, we'll make sure we, we don't, I can't answer that straight on, but it should.
Okay.
And, but we'll take a closer look at the survey to make sure, because where it comes around that corner, it's going down to those inlets, it's further down the street. And so, let me check the grades on those, but it, it should do, because it should fix it.
Right. It's probably, it's probably a combination of events happening, but it's, it's always in a torrential downpour.
Yeah.
There's a brief period in time to where that intersection is underwater.
I'll make it my next here. I'll make sure that works.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? All right. We heard.
Okay. Twenty Third, it's mill and repaving, along with curb replacement.
Basically, Bay Shore is taking care of all the, of these streets.
Yes.
There's some out there like Twenty Eighth Street, our street, basically, from the midpoint of the street going toward the Bay Shore. Yeah, so basically, from the midpoint, it actually flows toward the Gulfport. I mean, so all that water goes into the channels in, right? And then the other half goes to a bay shore.
So you're going to double it, how would, you know, what are you, what are you...
Right.
What can we add?
People said that wasn't a good idea. My first, we did, and they, you know, some people I talked to here, they said, no, it all goes one direction. I said, well, no, that's, that's what I wanted to do, pull out the bars, that was the...
There's some...
All right.
Any questions about Twenty Third? All right. There's another one.
Okay, Twenty Fourth.
On Twenty Fourth Street, it's the same thing, mill and replace, and replacing the curb. And no drainage pipe that in the history as well.
Council? Twenty Fifth?
Twenty Fifth. Twenty Fifth, we're doing the same thing, we're doing the mill replacement, and also replacing the curb. And here, there's the park at the end of this street, and the, the intersection, it's in high business there. So we'll be curving around that as well.
Council? All right, Morgan George?
Okay, Morgan. Same thing, we're doing a mill replacement of the pavement, and replacing up the curb. And there, well, we'll do the milling and the curb replacement after reuse terms to, to high business, and then at the, we're stopping at Shore, Bay Shore. Okay, also, just keeping my eyes, but there's the drainage improvements on this one. I've got the thing there, it's whole. I've got something here to stick it out, it's not... Hold on. Anyway, the, uh... How can I get this back, though? Okay. All right, there we go. Let me look up here, because this has got a thing covered up. What we're doing here, there's an existing pipe that goes down from the intersection of high business, and that, that pavement, that pipe that remains, we're also keeping in place the existing inlet there, and on Morgan, and then it turns and goes out to the intercostal, to the north, between the parking lots. That, that is remaining as well. What we'll be doing is, it's got indications of barnacles, so we'll be cleaning the barnacles out of that. And that goes out to the C wall.
It goes out where?
Out to the C wall, on, in the intercostal.
Okay. So no new pipe in there?
No new pipe.
Okay.
I'm seeing that we touch Victoria Avenue on a boat, I believe. If I think this correctly. Yes, are we doing anything with Victoria? Victoria, it says Victoria Avenue, like, not Victoria Avenue.
No, that's high business, that's...
High business. I was trying to figure out where is Victoria, but it's on every grid.
Yeah, that's on the survey, and we're giving that to you.
Okay, well, actually, I'm in high business, I kept reading Victoria, but are we doing anything with high business?
No, just stopping everything at the radius return.
Yeah, high business was like Bay Shore, where especially those segments, the condition wasn't horrible. I'm assuming that's, right, they were not ready to bury.
Any questions or comments on that? And now we go to Victoria.
Same here, I thought it, I, I feel like it's a city somewhere, I went through the city, but it was...
Well, I tried to do it in the road, and I knew where it was, I didn't move, do it with. Okay, we're on the next page, we're on the next...
Okay. Now we're, the, the outfalls. And here, we've got Twelfth and Thirteenth, where we're indicating clearing, clearing the barnacles. And we may want to, you know, we're also looking at, at cost of the slip line for something to, to help the drains.
This is up on the last project, where we talked about directions. You know, we come through, and we're going to other slip lining, come at me in these streets.
So do you recommend a slip line, or my understanding is another pipe would actually go in there, or tear it in place?
A, a slip line or a tear in place, what you make to it.
Okay.
Okay, and at the, the outlets, they're at Twenty Twenty Bay Shore, Twenty Fifteen, there again, the main thing is to clean, clean out those pipes, clean the barnacles away.
And that, these, these two, we know that there is damage, we're washing into the pipe, and that's all you can, from the inspection, you're not going to...
Yeah, I think, I don't know if it's at Twenty Twenty, maybe, uh, at Twenty Two O Five, yeah. Did, that, that video, I don't know when we get there, but it's, it's interesting what happened there. Okay, are we ready to go to the next sheet?
Sure.
On Twenty Two O Five, Twenty Three O Seven, the other outfalls there is cleaning the barnacles. And the interesting thing that we're staying on Twenty Two O Five, and look at the, at the video, this one's got a video. You see where the, the pipe takes a turn, goes out to the C wall? But the concrete pipe ends at the straight pipe. And what they did is they bent the CMP, come out to the C wall. And that, you know, that, that outfall of, uh... Needs to be there from that, from the C wall to where the concrete pipe ends. It either needs to be slip lined or replaced. It looked like it was okay, and slip lining that small section there would, because it, uh... Really, something needs to be done at that, at that turn.
Is there a way, like there at that intersection of the corrugated metal pipe and the concrete pipe?
Yeah.
Can it end there, if we remove the CMP?
No, because it'll be behind the C wall.
Okay, so why didn't they just go straight to the shorter property line?
Yeah.
Okay.
What, what is your, what is your recommendation? You say something needs to be done here, what's the best solution?
My judgment on that is verifying the condition of the CMP. So if the CMP in the level there is not rusted, but is sound, then slip line would be, what we recommend. If that pipe is not sound, then replace that section of CMP with the same material, and then out the existing hole, so keeping the pipe the same, just replace that section of pipe.
Okay, so you just didn't, you didn't point anything out on the drawing, that's why I'm...
No, this was late night study, and making sure that, you know, reviewing is what, what we're showing. And that's, that's one that popped out last night, handling and reviewing that. And that, uh, looking at that section, we need, we need to determine the pipe's structural soundness, and then, then we decide what to do with that.
Okay, so would be possible to see pictures of this also, whenever you...
Yeah, I have them here, I just got to pull them up, yeah.
Nice.
Is there a, is there a junction box there?
Yeah.
They actually connected corrugated metal pipe to the concrete pipe?
Yeah, if I can, uh...
Would it make sense to put a junction box there, and then put another concrete pipe, replacing the corrugated metal pipe out to the wall?
Is this someone of yours? I think that's a...
How old is that quarter?
You're too...
Is it done? You don't wear that well. It's like silver?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, is it functioning now, or does it give pretty good outfalls?
It does function.
Yeah, but...
Twenty Two O Five.
Obviously, especially if you're problem, so I think, you know, we should do something. So we don't have anything connected to the end? No, it's right now, we got pictures of it.
I had it, I just got a sign. Ah, here it is. There it is, can you see that on the screen? What you're seeing, right immediately, let's see. Right here, I see him, that's a joint section of the concrete. Then you've got this pipe that goes out with much action in here, it's kind of hard to see, but that's where the pipe, CMP is bent, turned, towards the C wall. So it looks good up until that point. And the, you know, the video went out to the opening of the C wall, but we just got to make sure that pipe there, this section of pipe that's in here, that it's in good shape. If it's in good shape, then... If it's in good shape, then the solutions are either slip line up to the concrete pipe or replace the pipe.
Replace the corrugated metal pipe with what?
CMP, but you have to look at the existing opening. It's easiest just to replace what's there. Looking at that section of pipe that I get a CMP, I think what they bent that metal pipe to make it fit through the wall. To put concrete, we'd have to put a manhole in so we can turn it.
All right. So you think they cut and spliced? You think they cut and spliced that pipe?
Yeah.
How far back is it from the open?
About 12 feet. It's not far.
So are there bushes there, Kyle? I mean, yeah, we did put a manhole there, junction box kind of reveal. Is that area sort of covered?
Yeah, most of these are.
Not in the middle of the yard, obviously. They wouldn't say.
Yeah, that's right under property line.
Right under property line.
Is the metal pipe on the property line or is it on?
Well, there's a utility even that exists on the flat, but most of these, right on the property line, people who drive walls, fences, trucks, all stuff.
But we can get to that without going through a legal?
Oh, I haven't checked, I think we haven't done it yet, but theoretically yes.
Pull 12 feet out, we can check. Do it right, especially if it's a metal pipe. That's really the only one that has any real problems, doing everything else looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
All right, Vice President Shirley, do you have any comments?
No, I'm in agreement with Frank that if there's any way to remove that pipe and put a junction box in there, I think it would be the best way to go. But short of that, you know, that's probably next year to figure out.
You don't know how old that is, do you?
Probably as old as the late 60s, 30s. You know, we can look at, there's junction blocks, there may be a great inlet and then they bend turn at that point, so there's.
I'm just thinking that if it was cut and bent, it's got to be rotten, that cut down.
That's my guess.
Yeah. Just even if they welded it back then, it was otherwise, it just popped.
Yeah, that, more than likely, these things would be really misplaced. Okay.
All right. Mr. Reed, do you have any comments?
My only last comment is, a lot of these, especially down Bay Shore where we have the notes of clear barnacles and breeze, I wanted to make sure that we thoroughly cleaned out these pipes, that we have an option to, if we find that there is some damage, to put a tear in place pipe at that time. Kind of when we were doing 12th and 13th, we discovered it, just that's a money contingency money set aside so that if we do identify a problem, while they're out there.
And just curious, from beginning to end, what timeframe are we looking at on completion of this entire project?
I believe for construction, over the year?
Yeah.
We want to do it on.
I'm looking at a year for construction.
Starting when?
Soon as we can get it out.
Well, once we decide and get it out.
You want to start before November?
Well, I'm encouraging. Short season, right here. At this point, it's going to be closer to November. Because we have, you know, we're going to need at least a month. But we're still kind of redesigning a little bit for the series.
Looks like the city will be in pretty good shape, it looks much, much better than it were in the past. And I think this was a good idea and I'm looking forward to seeing it get started. Any other comments on this?
Yes.
So there's very little pipe, new additional pipe that's going in, is that an active statement you feel like?
Right.
Okay. Was there any consideration for that little pipe that we're going to be using for maybe a, for HDPE as opposed to concrete pipe?
Can you, and short answer is yeah, HDPE can be, particularly in these areas where we're not underneath pavement. I worry about HDPE under pavement, particularly here, it would not be if it was deeper, but it's not that big depth and you've got the big trucks that come down. I just want to, I worry about how the HDPE will respond to those loads that it definitely are. So we have to look at that.
I know there's certain companies and certain types of HDPE that are approved by FDOT that they put out on highways, so pretty large trucks there. I don't know specifically what they require with cover. But there's a lot out there.
Yeah, I know FDOT's got it, I'm not sure if they use it underneath the pavement.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
If they do, then great, then.
But it's the double wall, so it's pretty strong, it's been tested a lot.
I can check.
Yeah, so maybe we could have, when the contractor's submitting a bid, what's the term I'm looking for? My blood sugar's getting off.
Approved alternate?
Alternate, yeah, if we do an off bid with the material, just to see how that costs out?
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, that'd be great. And the asphalt, yeah, I wanted to talk about the asphalt, because I'm a big believer in, you know, we don't want to, we want to do this to last as long as possible. So what's the best asphalt we can put on those roads? Clearly, most of our roads are automobiles, however, the biggest truck that causes the most problems is the garbage truck, because it's stop, go, stop, go, stop, go. And if we have, I mean, I could drive around the roads now, but it's just on 12th and 13th, and there's a lot of heating and stuff going on. I'm sure it's from the garbage truck, especially when it's as hot as it is. I mean, I don't know what type, number they use for that, but I know like on Gulf Boulevard, when you see where it meets, they have a lot of granite in that. So I don't know what that grade is, but my only, I would like to see us use the best and strongest possible asphalt, or at least get some different bids.
We could put, we could put airport grade down there, but it looks like crap.
Well, I mean, look at Gulf Boulevard, where they tie in our streets, and that's been there for a while, I guess, I don't know, maybe service, but like, you know, so here it comes, comes up, boom, they cut it off, and then our payment starts, and their payment has a lot of granite, you can see it. And that really is strong stuff.
That's an FDOT.
Correct.
Right.
Now, they're using super pavement.
Okay.
It's the type of materials, I think is what that is. And that's, I think the DOT started proving it like in the mid 90s, 96, 97.
Okay.
And, but there is a topic, they call it super pavement.
Okay.
And I don't know how much it costs, how much more is it different from the county standard pavement section, which is, the DOT's asphalt, asphalt to concrete, you know, that, what's the difference between that and the super paved or any other brand? But I'd have to find out.
Yeah, maybe again, that would be a good fit for an alternate bid.
Right.
You know, if we're going to.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, it's cost of this, we're going to put in super paved, it's going to cost this.
Yeah.
And then perhaps at that time, you guys can tell us, you know, what's the benefit? You know, what's the lifespan of one versus the other? So if one lasts 20 more years, just to pick a number.
Well, there's that, that information's out, I can get that out as well.
Okay.
And actually, the difference between asphalt and super paved is how it's mixed.
Right.
It's not a hot mix, it mixes a little different. So, and it's got, it can either be coarse or fine grained material.
Right.
Depending on how coarse it went to your surface.
We can research that.
Perfect, appreciate it.
Can I just add, I just want to say, the FDOT departments, in which they're, what we remain in our interior streets, and typically we go back, there's that big rock, and it's a lot, it's a lot different mix, you're right, but it also is built to accommodate heavy traffic load, and we aren't dealing with heavy traffic load in our interior road. So I don't want to, I think it's great to do the research, but I think we just need to be careful not to spend too much money on the road's systems that aren't.
That's where we can see the alternate bid.
Yeah, exactly, that's, you know, when we're looking at pavement, you know, what kind of alternatives, you know, is it appropriate for a residential community street, you know, the type of loads and traffic that we have there? You know, it's a lot different than I-275 and pavement that they put there, it'd be a different pavement.
The entire process is different, it requires different machinery.
Right.
They're set up for a long run.
It is different machinery, it's a different lane of asphalt, so is it appropriate for these streets? That's what I've got to figure out.
Right, I mean, Gulf Boulevard, I didn't see that lane, but I'm sure it was not very complicated, because of whatever pavement they put out there on Gulf Boulevard, and it's strong. And again, I get it, you have big 18 wheelers going on the interstate or some of those roads, but they're going, you know, 65 months an hour, they're not stopping like these garbage trucks. When they go stop, go, hit the brakes every 20 feet, that's a heavy load that's pushing on that soft asphalt.
Right, right.
And that's what creates heating, and then you have hobbles, and then you're wondering three years later, we just did this.
Exactly.
That type of thing.
Right.
You're underwriting, your basis is with your home.
I'm sure the technology they change, asphalt is continuously changing, you know, different grades, and they're working on it, and you're always smarter than me.
What's a ton of asphalt going for today compared to what's already coming to you under there you are now?
City asphalt.
What are you guys looking for?
Now that you asked that question.
A good, better, best, is that what you're looking for?
And see what the cost of course will is, yeah. Because we know what we already used, like on 12th and 13th street, so that, you know, it costs X.
If you want something that doesn't wear out, you'd concrete, but it wears out too.
Yeah, but not like Joe you were saying, FDOT says you have to have, it has to handle over 100,000 cars per day, at least, or 300,000. Concrete streets probably less, longer than us.
Yeah, the concrete asphalt's going just over $400 a ton.
Asphalt?
Yeah.
And concrete's 200 yards?
Yeah, concrete, yeah, concrete's, it's less than that. Probably somewhere around upper 200 to 300.
Now, what's our average life expectancy on this project after it's done?
Roads, I mean, you look at some of our roads, they, you know, they were paved in early 2000s, they're still in good condition, so, I mean, again, that just depends on like where, like, some of them, base back and underneath and just kind of things, only resurcings if some problems are, you know, exist and come back, but, I mean, I guess, I'd say at least 20 years for the pavement or more. But again, kind of like, we've got some other factors too, you know, there's things changing in the long term, the planning of, kind of like, again, our stormwater system.
So one of my fears is that if we ask for this various grades, how do we know that they're quoting the same thing? And so, I understand where you're going, you want something that's impervious, it's going to last in 50 years if we can get, but at the same time, I don't want to skew the big process by asking a question, and their interpretation of what we're asking for is completely different. So I don't want to get too far in the weeds on this. I'm sure that a general job like this, they're all sourcing their asphalt from, probably over in Largo and Starkey Brothers, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, and they only offer one type of asphalt, or do they?
Couple of mixes.
Couple of different mixes?
Yeah, there's different mixes, and usually you see what's the most common mix used in here, depending on the Dallas County mixes, the St. Pete, the DOT for this area, they, those guys know them all, and they're all very close, so.
I guess in the bid process, we should specify what mixes we're looking for.
Right, when we do specify the mix and the thickness and all that, that's where, if we want, we can do an alternate on that if another mix, if you like, put into, like a super paid, but the, I really don't think that that would be appropriate for a residential street at that time, that type of asphalt.
We got to take into account oil jump to $18, right, some oil for barrel, it may just cost us a fortune. Let's just get this drawn. All right, you have any other questions or comments for Mr. Reed?
We might be able to, I mean, very maybe able to estimate how it means already done for this project as is for the asphalt, you know, so you can kind of see the difference with not actually going to bid unless you're serious about doing that cost increase for the higher grade asphalt. Now, he should be able to estimate based on that mix, what the cost difference roughly is going to be, just like he estimates for some project.
What I'd like to see is, you know, the same mix that we used on 12th and 13th, which would make sense, and then see an alternate bid for an improved mix that our engineering firm think would be adequate and usable for our city streets, that's better, and that way we can judge the cost differential. I mean, I do something like that, you just walk in blindfold. Why would the city not want to seek a better product that they could get that would just be a little smaller incrementing costing? And the only way you're going to know that is to bid it out and include an alternate bid, so you can see it in the back. To say, no, we don't want to do that, is a misuse of funding of the taxpayers' bidding.
I think a lot of people are going, a lot of contractors in this economy are not going to give you fixed prices on asphalt. It changes all the time. Unless you're going to pay it tomorrow morning or within two weeks.
No, they have to give us a fixed price for a certain amount of time.
For it, for it. Very, very close window, they'll probably have a disclaimer in there, if oil keeps rising.
Well, you can have that, right? I was involved with a lot of projects when China Steel, yeah, it's got to get, hey, we pay the concrete, we'll be paying them, because that was the right reason to do it.
I've been involved with any of the Largo lines of streets. Oil is just, there's a rating, you just can't, you're lying. All right, so can we just read your consensus on this? You want to have a regular versus a premium grade, correct?
Yes, whatever our engineering firm feels is a good alternate bid to the same type of asphalt that we used in 12th and 13th. We've used that more than a couple of times, right?
Yeah.
So then, what another upgraded asphalt would be to be used in our roads so that we can see what the cost differential is and make a logical, educated, informed decision?
I would also like to know what we give for that enhanced cost.
Of course.
What's the life expectancy?
Exactly, agree.
And without that, we won't be. And, uh, without that, we, we won't be able to make a good decision.
Right.
So, I'm okay with that. Vice Mayor Shirley, would you like to weigh in on that conversation?
I agree, we should have some comparisons, comparisons and competitive for asphalt.
All right. Do we have any, uh, any questions about these, uh, numbers that we're showing on the cost here, three street, anything like that?
So that's the cost estimates per, for the design currently.
I'm sorry, say that again.
These are the cost estimates per, um, street area for the current design.
What was the total?
So, it was within a twenty percent contingency, which is more than our past projects, we typically did ten. Right now, we're at, uh, four point zero eight million.
And what did we get approved by, um, the lending?
It was two and a half roughly, like two point three, but that was on top of what we already.
Eight.
For the stormwater.
So, you're, we're good?
What current, currently, we're, we're on the estimated budget.
Right.
Great. As long as we don't wait too long. Watch the prices go up. Okay, um, do we have anything else on this discussion before we move on? Larry, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, uh, thank you, your team also, uh, for giving us a great presentation and, uh, and detailed documentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'll tell you what, it is seven thirty-two, why don't we take a five to ten minute break, and then come back and continue. We're back into the work section, and, uh, we're on item number two, discussion on strategic plan objectives for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. This was questioned by Senator Andrew Reebler. Take away Mr. Reebler.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the strategic plan, uh, we went through over two meetings, um, for each point, and, uh, kinda made some notes and updates. And what I did is I took, um, what was said in the meetings, and I updated it, so for each goal, um, we updated the four points. And we left it off, and this is before our first budget workshop, that we would come back and figure out some new objectives. And that takes you to the last page of the, of the agenda packet, um, we got the gray and the red. Some of them, there's, there's objectives that we're still working on for each goal, and then, um, you can see the red sort of kind of tubes, we just don't have another objective currently. And the idea, when we come up with these objectives, is we want them to, uh, fall in line with our budgetary planning for the upcoming year, so. We kind of left it at each council member would, you know, go home, think about it, come up with some ideas, sort of to fill in some of these blanks. So we started with goal one, we got the health and safety, we got two, we still have two objectives, which is the, uh, address the mitigated street flooding issues, which is what we're currently doing, we just did. And, uh, develop the street lighting plan, so we had money set aside for street lighting, um, like I've said in previous meetings, I've got work on, uh, coming up with a, a, a kind of a standard throughout the city, where we can improve our streetlights, um, focusing on our city streets. So, for goal two, um, that's the best value for the taxpayer. We kinda, so we constantly revisit the economic impacts on the, uh, capital improvement, um, budget and the reserve funds. This is where we need another objective, um, that falls in line with the, uh, best, best target for the taxpayers.
Nelson, any comments, questions? Um, I'm, I'm looking at objective number two, and I'm also looking at, uh, at the entire tax dollar value of goal two. And basically, what I'm seeing is that these are things that are, we're currently doing now. Are we looking, are you looking for, uh, a new idea to add to this, or?
There may not be currently something that we have to add, it's just, um, having the objective set is the goal, or a point to get to for, in the next fiscal year, uh, of reaching the strategic goal. So, I don't know if you have anything that falls in line, uh, that we feel would be in the goal two?
Well, we, we're, uh, I know that, um, Councilmember Zabel has, he's still working on the Marina Plan, uh, and that is definitely. I don't know if that would actually fall in, in this category, I see it's listed here, but is that an, an objective that we should be able to add, or is that considered something small?
So, so far to date, hasn't been that small of an issue, I think, I mean, we've kinda bounced around quite a bit, um.
Right. But are we, are, I mean, is this actually, at, at the end of the day, is it changing our tax dollar value, or is it, um, or enhancing our tax dollar value, or is it just streamlining the process?
I'd say most of, streamlining the process is gonna get more applicable.
I mean, cause it's definitely an objective for us, but, um, I'm, uh, I'm not sure if it would follow the tax dollar value as an objective. Right now, if I just had to pluck something out of the air and plug into this, I would say, well, that's what we're currently working on, um, but it's definitely where it belongs. Anyone else like to chime in on that, or not? Vice Mayor Shirley?
Yeah, I don't know that we can, um, that the Marina is really a tax dollar objective, in other words, I don't know that there's much more that we could squeeze out of the Marina fund as far as revenues go. So, I look at this goal as a link, how do we, how do we increase revenues? Am I, I mean, maybe I'm off base there, but, um, and, and I think that looking more towards City Hall, and I know we kinda tapped out as a stand, and looking at grants, so, you know, I, I, I know there's been a lot of discussion about thinking of grant policies, and maybe this is where we put that object, that objectively goal to, or setting up a grant policy procedure.
Yeah, I would definitely agree. Grants have, are, have always been one of our weaknesses, uh, since I've been with the city, is, uh, they're few and far between, and whenever they do come along, they're not huge grants. But I've always wondered, I guess we all have, are we overlooking something, because we don't either have the skills or the manpower to actually pursue these grants? And maybe one of the things that we should be doing, and I think we've already briefly touched on it in a past meeting, was leveraging the, uh, the services of the Port of Leve City, because they have, they actually have a, a service that we, we can tap into for free, uh, to help, uh, evaluate all the grants that are out there and see what's eligible for us. That, that seems like it would be low hanging fruit if somebody was, uh, was able to spot it, and, uh, and would know immediately if we were eligible. And we.
No, I have, um, we recommended, I have signed up, and, um, I'm, I'm gonna see if they offer something more dialed in to what we're looking for, because when I did sign up for the program, it sends me a weekly email, so pretty much every possible grant nationally. Um, and there's ways to kinda sort, search through it. But I have not seen aspects of the program, kinda like what you're saying, whether they'll actually do some, some work, uh, looking through your community, um, if that exists.
Yeah, I, I wanna say, I, I wish that I had, the guy agreed with me, but I wanna say that they actually do have grant running systems, uh, as part of, as part of one of the benefits that we have, it's just a matter of, um, I guess, making the contacts and, and staying on it.
Right.
Yes, yeah. Vice Mayor Shirley?
Can I just add, um, and maybe grants, um, in general, may, may not be the ideal item for that, but alternate funding for free nourishment, and some of those projects that we know are, um, items that are on our goal list, that we don't know how to fund, and we don't know how to make it happen. So, it's gotta be on that goal somewhere, and that tax dollar value is probably the place for it to be.
So, the, the, you're talking about beach re-nourishment?
Yes.
And the, the problem with, with going alone on beach re-nourishment, if we had to do it ourselves, without our neighbors doing it, uh, it, it doesn't last very long. And, and that's been some of the pushback that, that, uh, that I've received whenever I've been overly local to the county. But, um, since you're gonna bring that up, I, I can go ahead and tell you that, um, Janet Long announced at my first T D C meeting, uh, that the county is moving forward with planning and permitting to do the most, uh, needed areas for beach nourishment, and that would include Bel Air Beach. And so, that, that should be something that we, we won't have to worry about, but unfortunately, whether we did it, or they did it, uh, or, or the Fed did it, we're still looking at two years out before anything actually happens. Two years.
Yeah.
And hottest, hottest, uh, year on the record, or I think since like thirty-three or something like that, and it's Power K up there. And we're now in the most danger that we've ever been in, as far as the state with the perfect storm, because two entities were waiting to see who was gonna bleed first. So, it's, uh, it's, it's sad that we've gotten to this point, but I do think that, um, the county is now, they, they have their eyes on bigger projects that, uh, they consider far more important than beach nourishment, um, such as the Ray Stadium. And I told them, I told Janet Long in the meeting, that, um, if you wanna even consider talking about that, you're gonna have to show the county that you're moving forward with this beach nourishment project. Otherwise, I, I think people are not going to approve, people are gonna completely disapprove and, and, um, be far more local than I am. So, hopefully, we've got some relief coming soon. Total, we think this, this stadium raised a hall on average of eighteen thousand a night, uh, unless there's another team, people coming down here to use the beach, they'll go to. Larry? I hear you. Yeah, I mean, well, it's, it's, uh, at the end of the day, we know where all that bad tax money comes from, and it's a minimal investment. I, I hate that the county is having to take their bad tax and reinvest it into their sand, but if they don't do it, I don't think anyone else is. Uh, one more thing on that, and then I'll, I will continue on. The Army Corps of Engineers is coming down to do a small presentation and Q and A down at Treasure Island, and I will be attending that, so that I can, uh, I don't have the exact date, but I will.
Can you send out the date and time and I'll make sure?
I will, I will. I, I don't know who's invited, if it's a regular public meeting or not, but I will find out. All right, Vice Mayor Shirley, would you like to continue? I'm sorry, I got my little beach version rant there.
No, I knew that was gonna happen. I know it's a hot one, so, but that might be something to be added into that section.
Okay, um, so.
Just that's alternate funding.
Okay, grants and alternate funding, or, or just, you can, we can just call it alternate funding as an objective too. Everybody agree with that? Senator Andrew?
Yes. So, uh, goal three, uh, that's the communication and community. Uh, goal, uh, currently still have, and we're, you know, we're looking at it, is just, uh, just studying the intersection that kinda, um, you know, backs up, it's, you know, there may be nothing that can be done to it, but it's just, uh, the county offered, um, to do further study, and, uh, take them up on it, just to see if there's any kind of solution to make things better for the residents. So, we saw that on there, and like I said, they, they have their numbers in the, uh, firm that does their, uh, their actual study and calculations, is, it told me, it's probably about almost a month ago, there was a couple of months, so, we'll see what kind of, they come back with after the change, um, was made, which was, I think, two thousand eighteen, nineteen or so, when they, when they kinda restocked the lanes, maybe it might have been, this lane's twenty, but, um, kinda see what results came back, um, and see if there's any other way we could improve. So, that being said, I know when we talked about, uh, communication, the website has been brought up, um, there was, you know, some checking into, uh, doing, turning more with the, um, just making sure everything's, uh, I guess, ADA compliant. But we did talk about, uh, the possibility of putting in more, uh, forms, online, uh, request functionality on our website, to maybe, uh, like with the, uh, street parking. So, yeah, once, uh, turning more is, uh, you know, kinda checked out and reviewed what, um, what he thinks we're gonna be at, or what we can add, and what, what will keep us compliant, and that's something I can continue to, to grow on, so it's, it's, is the online form functionality up there for people that, um, don't always have time to either come to the, or they're calling in your office hours to get things done.
Uh, speaking of that, are you, uh, are you satisfied with our web hosting company? Are, are you having to figure out tools on your own, or are they, are they making suggestions, um, to, to improve on that? Because there, a lot of times, those utilities, the, the bolt-ons, let's just call them, or your, uh, what's the name, the, the core, WordPress.
Yep.
So, add-ons to WordPress, a lot of times, things are just out there, but you don't know that, and you shouldn't have to, uh, but they certainly should. And so, I'm just, I'm going back to my question, are you satisfied with the level of service we're getting out of them, or do you need something better?
Well, we talked about, um, Tom and Bel Air's website, and I did reach out to Civic Plus, because that is who they use. I, I spoke with Tom and Bel Air's staff first, um, and I found out who they, who they worked with to design that website. Um, that person, um, is no longer working in our area, but I have him being set up with someone from Civic Plus to discuss what, you know, what it would take to, could be to design one with theirs, um, and, you know, see what, see what their price points are. So, I wanna, I wanna see how that comes back. It comes to our current, um, website provider, WordPress, uh, you know, I think it's probably, it's a local option, I think they're in Sandy Beach, and it's, it was probably an economical option, but as far as really hearing ideas to improve our website, I, I don't, they don't do much of that. Now, if you ask them specifically, I'd like to accomplish this task, and, you know, how can I do that? And they, they will work on it for you, and they'll believe for it, but, um, there may be some better solutions or companies that bring this more up to speed.
Okay, so, that's a, that's a good example for goal number three, objective two, but I'm wondering if objective one is really, should actually be in that category? Because I, I don't see how. Because I don't see, your description of credible, timely, transparent information conveyed between the city residents and gendered product ownership, including inclusion and civility, I don't, I don't see a connection.
That was just under that goal, I don't know how it was connected previously. Where do you think?
I think it's, this is, this is, could be objective three of goal number one. It just doesn't seem like it belongs there. So I can see where the website possibly revising, giving some revising on the website would be a good objective. But I don't know about, once that, the Gulf Boulevard is moved out, what would you move out? Anyone?
I think utilizing the website once it's redesigned for communication and then utilizing any other means we have. I don't know, we're not doing any text messaging or anything like that, but there's certainly some who, I really don't want to get into the social media aspect of things, but certainly there's a lot of bad information on social media. And a way to combat some of that to provide the city side of what's really going on versus what the gossip is on social media. So I don't know how we tackle that, but I think it needs to be an objective because it is causing a lot of extra attention when it's not necessarily people have their information.
I agree. I don't know if it's, I mean, we know, really, we know there's one general area where this miscommunication is, is, this, I will call it miscommunication, it's almost a disinformation and also just a way to indirectly try to steer the council. But I don't know if it's actually worth trying to combat that anymore than we do in our meetings. No matter what you say, there's always going to be somebody that will take those words and turn them around. But I definitely like the idea of doing more on Facebook page than we're currently doing. Currently, I think all we're doing right now is announcing our meetings.
Yeah, it's a plugin, improve the website. Anytime we're putting something up officially, it just automatically gets transferred or stays.
I would like to see, whenever we complete these projects, I would love to see a picture of twelfth and thirteenth, how beautiful it is. I'd love to see every time one of our streets was moved on, how beautiful it is, you know? Showing the community that progress is made in our community. And it's more than just announcing meetings. Because I'm sure if you look at our meeting right now, what do you think, there's three people watching?
Yeah, we got two.
There's two.
We got two, yeah.
And they're part of the same household.
I will, I will say this, that it's, I've noticed that it's much easier for people to find their information in a Nextdoor post or a Facebook. Vice Mayor Shirley, is that in your house I'm here?
The community.
I'm here.
Okay, it's all right, it's all right. Okay, anyway, it's much easier, I've noticed that in the habits of people, it's much easier for them to read something real quick and form their opinion rather than listening to one of our meetings or listening to a recording or watching it on a YouTube video. I don't know, I don't know how to combat that because anyone can take whatever they want and turn a twist on it. But I think it's probably not a bad idea to have some kind of a summary at the end of our meetings, what did we discuss? It's kind of like the minutes, but maybe, maybe you take twenty minutes after a meeting and give a city manager a summary or something like that. And in that way, there's another location that people can go look and get the story. Because that's what's missing in this communication problem is that there's only one source right now. And it's the source that doesn't like anything that we do. And that's, that's just what it's turned into. Vice Mayor Shirley.
No, I agree. I think that's a good plan is to try to have some recap or something, but certainly if you go for something on a social media post, that would be all.
The one thing that I don't want us to get into, and I wish Councilmember Zabel was here because I'd like for him to hear this, is that if you decide that you're going to be the messenger for the city in a public forum where it now becomes records requestable, you may be setting yourself up for something bad in the future. So I don't think it's at all a good idea for anybody on the council to be the official messenger for the city of Bel Air Beach. And I hope that maybe, once you come up with something, Kyle did, and he won't have the need to do that anymore. Because after last time, it's wrong for him to wind up in some sort of illegal battle because he's having to go find something that he doesn't have. So just my two cents on that.
Yeah, we have our city email list, as you know, not everybody voluntarily decides to be part of it. I think mainly because of the public records aspect of it. But then again, you know, I think that the thought behind some of the email blasts are trying to reach more people, but we can't necessarily do that because we have to have them sign up and they have to be voluntarily doing that. When we talk about the Nextdoor platform, I'd love to do more research, especially with some of the larger government organizations, how, if you get involved on that.
I would not recommend being on that. I'd say something like.
So Facebook is more controllable?
Facebook and our website, I think that would be, that would be more than enough. It doesn't require responses, it just needs to be coming from somebody, a city official.
So do a little more of a summary. Because we try to, some of the success element stories, we try to capture the newsletter. I think Patty does a good job in doing that. I don't want to, I like the idea of like a meeting summary, I think that could help people, maybe give them something shorter to follow. On a regular basis, that does make sense. I just don't want to try to, like says she does, she puts so much effort into the newsletter, maybe get that somehow up there. You know, sort of not redoing kind of the same thing.
I think summary of the meetings would be plenty. I just, I mean, we have these lengthy conversations back and forth, but at the end of the day, we've reached a consensus on something and this is the direction we think we're going on this particular topic. And it doesn't have to be in depth of who said what or anything like that, but just a general gist of this is, it looks like this is the direction we're going. Tonight, we talked about the drainage plan. We discussed the drainage plan. There's all the streets that are going to be impacted, stay tuned, you know, things like that. And I know the last thing you want is more on your plate, but I still think that it's something that would help the city dramatically. Because the last thing I want is anyone to look at Nextdoor as their primary source of news about Bel Air Beach.
Right, and we don't want, we don't want to get involved in something that we put, you know, factual, you know, evidence or news out there and then have it be a forum or anyone can tag on, you know, because it will never, yeah, endless bound.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't add here, the challenges here first is, I don't think in the history have ever been persuaded by a well worded social media post. But the added element for you folks is a challenge is that as you explore new platforms, being mindful of the public records, responsibilities and challenges that come with that, whether it's just, it's enough to retain your post, but if it does have a thread element to it or a comment thread element, your ability to retain that as a dynamic record, because from Monday to Wednesday, maybe nobody comments, on Thursday, somebody does, and then nine months later, somebody does again. And what is our ability to retain that record is that that can present a challenge all its own. I think that the more you stay within the platforms that you can control and are more accustomed to, that may be best. Understanding I'm coming at it from the legal side and not the political side of trying to reach the most people the easiest way.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, so back to objective number two then for goal number three. Do we have any other suggestions other than the, other than website, which actually would include your platform? Do we need to revisit this later? Give everybody some time, maybe email them their ideas.
Yeah, no, I think I got, objective one being the website, we're going to look into who we're using and how it's designed and see if there's a better way to do that. And then also, will we can do it in-house to maybe, you know, look up some of the online forums and things that.
I will say that Patty's newsletter, nice looking, and it always helps, very nice and professional.
Thank you. Sometimes I get help.
What's that?
I said, sometimes I get help. And I appreciate it.
And then for like two, I have, like we just talked about, kind of coming up with a quick way to recount meetings to get, you know, the facts directly from the city.
Yeah, I think that that would work. We'll remodel the website and then just faster delivery of what are we doing? What did we talk about last time? Vice Mayor Shirley, are you okay with that?
Yeah, that all sounds good to me.
Okay, I'll just keep calling on you because I don't, I don't know if you're raising your hand or if you're, no. All right, continue with Mr. Rieger.
Okay, so goal four, that's the aesthetic goal. And that is create a vibrant, well planned, well maintained appearance for the city that donates our sense of community or denotes our sense of community and our quality of life. And our first objection, objective we have is the Gulf Boulevard purification project, which we know is underway. It's going to take some more time obviously to get the complete design completed. But we are looking for a second objective to relate to the aesthetic factor and goals of the community.
First thing that comes to mind for me is continuing code enforcement. I mean, it's, that's what keeps our city beautiful now. Cars not parked in the streets, laws are nicely managed here, trees are trimmed, homes are.
You bringing that up reminds me of just last year, it was October when we went through this. We talked about coming back around, doing an office survey as a follow-up to what we've begun, so, yeah.
Can I add something?
You sure can.
And can we also add the, just reviewing the valley curb? I mean, I know where we went through and we repaved some of these roads. The roads are beautiful, but created, piling and all of these valley curbs. And we've got issues throughout the city where the paving has been being done. So if we could just maybe assess that and add that as a objective under goal for, you know.
And this is for repair?
Yes, after paving, we created issues with standing water in those valley curbs throughout the city.
So that would be an objective three then? Or do we want to toss out code enforcement and make this our, because we're doing code enforcement all the time anyway.
I think it needs to be objective because I know several areas where we've got slip and fall potential where the water stands so long that it's creating slime in the valley curb and potential problems for residents.
Does that come under the stormwater improvement issue, talking about slime?
Well, I think it does for what we're currently, our product now. And if you go through the plan, just see, and I made a point in our meetings that we need to spec out the curving, really define what our expectations are. You know, you're always going to have, given our elevations, it's going to be harder to have the most perfect system because they work with a lot more fall in a lot of the newer developments. But we still expect it out in a way to show what we want our product to be, to make sure that we minimize any kind of problem.
You know, it's interesting also that I actually see the resurfacing of our streets as part of your vision. Because you look at one that's just been done versus one that hasn't been done in twenty years and you, I mean, it's night and day. It just pops when you see what's done. So it's funny how this stormwater project actually does a lot for the beauty of our community. Like fixing the curves and the paving the streets. It can almost fit right into the statics also. And I think that's a problem. Go ahead.
The one problem I see is that we just, there were unintended consequences. These valley curbs were fine until we came to pave the streets and then do anything with the valley curbs that were existing. And now we have standing water. So we've created some problems on some streets that haven't been corrected.
So is this aesthetics or would you consider this public safety and health? And then I, I would challenge to say that what you're talking about falls right into the address in mitigating street flooding issues. It's just a different type of flooding.
I would agree. It's just wasn't discussed when we're talking about flooding, so I don't want it to be overlooked. Because we think these roads are done and they're not.
I got you, okay. So then we would strip that out and go back to code enforcement, I guess. Because, can anyone think of anything else that we could plug into aesthetics for objective two? Just continue code enforcement. If anyone thinks of something else, let's email the city manager.
So the last goal is called five beach water, which is preserve and protect our city's natural beach and waterfront environments. And we obviously have the beach nourishment ongoing. Comes to beach and water, I think of the beach side and harbor side. This is kind of been something that's come up in the last couple of meetings, the discussion of, you know, saving money up for the city to purchase a boat to do maintenance on the harbor side primarily. And that's, that would become useful for maintenance of our, our summer outfalls throughout the city and as well as our markers that are out there for the, for the wake zones and the, also the piling signs that we have in the south side of the state. So, I mean, whether or not, what our ultimate decision is on that purchase, I think that, that kind of, we talk about strategic planning, lining of budget, budget lining, strategic planning, that kind of. strategic planning, that kind of stuff's my money.
Counselor?
Well, five aesthetics and the beach, we brought up, I'm breaking it more often. There's the beach. That's, that's the problem.
It's, it's, it's an ongoing project. They've asked that every six years. I think really, I thought the original one was five.
Yes, that's two hundred and fifty.
Yeah. I will have more information once I get to hear from the horses now at this meeting, but it's ten counties that are being, that are basically having this problem. And I spoke with Representative Luna about this and wanted to get her take because she's been working really hard trying to get the Army Corps to change their mind also. And in fact, she said now this is her number one priority, more than anything else is she's focused on is getting the Army Corps to change their mind. And the way that she's planning on doing it is there's a way that, I believe it's next year, not this year, but next year, they're going to change some language in all the books that will prevent the, it'll basically take the power away from the Army Corps to do what they're doing. In the meantime, this year, the BICC city mayors voted altogether to allow her to do, you know, what the name of the rule is. I can't remember the name of the rule, but it's basically, it's a tool that they have to strip the funding of people that aren't doing their job correctly. And so she's actually going to see if she can, if she can send that through and defund the individuals that are responsible for nation's happening. But I don't know, I don't know. I think at the end of the day, we're probably not ever going to get that funding again because until the federal government can, can 100% own our beaches, and no, and no one can say, alright, this is my land, I'm not signing a region, I think that there's just not going to be. Maybe she'll have good luck with it, but...
I think there's two major three court cases that state that, that property rights on these, on these residents are impacted, and it's a pretty problematic effort.
The problem is, is the, is the line that they're drawing in the sand from where, where they want the easements to go. Some of them are beyond the main high water line, or main high water line, and they're, they come right up into people's backyards and they're, they don't want to do it because it's perpetual. If it was a two-year thing or something like that, they might find it more susceptible to it, but...
And the problem here is the, the last time they did an ECL line, it's probably fifteen, twenty years ago, they did it, you know, and you've had so many beach storms and evulsions taking away sand. These private owners have never established or replenished their sand. There's Supreme Court cases stopped the beach nourishment, it's right across the, our state saying, hey, you lost your property rights because you didn't take care of the thin, we already decided on it. And I'm telling you, we live in an area where we don't have 19 blocks nourished since I came here, way before I came here. But you look at the topography, two years after the beach nourishment, it's all leveled down, all that sand just fills right in, and our neighbor in town gets free public sand at their, needs to stop.
And, well, the reason why that happens is because they don't, the reason why they don't get it is because they didn't have any public land to give or park.
And I say that's hard to make you address because we have three beach access lines.
I'm not, I'm not going to give you anything.
Called, plus and everything like that, that access to these lines.
I'm not going to give you the realities of the...
And meanwhile, and meanwhile, City of Bellar Beach gave up all of our, so, so, but we, you know, and we should not have, but we did it enough to go back today.
Amen.
Well, I think the biggest problem is that the Army Corps should have just done it anyway all the way down the beach and not skipped Bellar Shore. But that's, that's another story and that's something much bigger than all of us. Vice Mayor Shirley, you were gonna, you were gonna chime in on something before...
Yes, I just wanted to add on the beach and waterfront, that we need to, what we're doing in code review, review our code regarding our mooring policy and restrictions within our jurisdiction of waterfront. We live in a waterfront community, of intercostal end beach side, and we need to put into place in our code, set restrictions to go mooring and things of that nature. And I think that should be part of our plan, our strategic plan.
Is it enforceable at all?
Absolutely, because of the right code in place, such as pumping, pumping out your boat that's been sitting there for three months, rather than, you know, those boats are just pumping up aboard, so there's feces, small feces on our shores and no one's going to...
And that's where, I understand what you're saying, I say the same thing, there's a giant houseboat out there right now that, that I'm pretty sure people are living on, and then there's a yacht just adjacent to that, the houseboat, and I know I see people on that one every day and I, I don't see them leaving, so they're living on that boat. And you're right, they probably are pumping out right into the, into the ocean.
That's only been there what, a couple of weeks though?
Even two weeks is too long.
Yeah, I'm not saying, oh, yeah, my challenge, that's, because there was another boat out there that was brought up to me, and I think it's moving out, it's been there for like two months.
No.
No, I'm just, yeah, I'm just, yeah, right.
We're slowly becoming Bellar blood, is what's happening. They're, they're slowly filling it in over there and we're going to lose control of it, is what's going to happen if we can't figure out a way to stop it, but I don't know. I, I have yet to have, to hear a good solution.
I can tell you, I meant, we've been to several times in Key West they require proof of pump out weekly, and if you don't have it, you can move along. And that's, but we have to have a boat to reinforce that code, and if we aren't able to enforce that code we've put in place, there's no way we're going to play. So I'm just suggesting that we start figuring serious about it before we have a problem.
Well, that would be a sheriff's, before we forgot us.
Well, sheriffs are code enforcement, right? So how much do we want to bring them on?
For sure, what I could, what I could add to this dialogue is that, you know, especially as we have so many communities up and down our beaches, there are practical limitations to enforcement, whether those be, first, just jurisdictional, are they our waters? You know, even though we can see them from parts of our community, are they in fact our waters to patrol and enforce upon? If they are our waters, do we have the resources? Or to the extent we rely on community partners, do they have the resources? Are they willing to commit to doing those things? Sometimes the answer is no, or it will, eventually that's just not the highest priority and I'm not, it's no way impugning PCSO, I just mean in general, you have, you have, when you're working with community partners, they have their own priority list, et cetera. So I can tell you other communities have approached, I'd be interested, Member Shirley, to know more about that Key West example, and we can talk offline, because one of the challenges I've heard in, in other communities is the issue of your territorial waters, where you're enforcing. It's one thing if you're talking about somebody mooring just off of your marina or your mooring field, it's another when they're just out in the middle of intercostal and what your ability is to go out there and say, hey, you know, Bellar Beach has a problem with this, even if you're not in Bellar Beach proper. So, just some concerns, but as far as you folks go with goal and objective setting, you do as you wish and we will, of course, provide you whatever information, research you need to make the policy that flows from your goals and objectives.
Alright, so as far as goal five, what we should actually do, I, I don't really know if beach nourishment is, is something as much of a city issue, is, I mean, it definitely impacts us all, but as far as the day-to-day responsibilities and what City Manager Reefer has had to accomplish in his list of goals, is beach nourishment, should it even be on this list? Or is this something on the outside that, that we're all trying to deal with to help the city, but we're not, we're not funding it, we're not, we're, this city will never get a drop of sand on its own. It's just not going to happen. You'll never get the permit, you'll never, if you want a jetty or whatever, you're never going to get any of that. It aren't because the permitting is required by the Army Corps. And even now, with the county designing their plan, they're basically copying the Army Corps' plan and they're going to have to apply for permitting through the Army Corps. The difference is, is that we're not asking for any money, instead we're going to have to do it ourselves with our bed tax, which I don't approve because it's true. And so, you know, if that happens, if we have to fund it that way, well then we just don't get some things and we spend our money wisely on, on our cash account and, and keep it alive and fed well. So should, my question is, should this be objective one or should it be something else? I think the boats are really becoming a major issue and I agree with Vice Mayor Shirley. Is it objective one or, or should it be an objective two?
The beach nourishment, I think, goes in addition to the beach and the natural beach, it goes under the tax value too. If we don't have beach, the beachfront property and the tax value is down considerably.
But is, from a goal for the city, is it anything that we can accomplish?
Yes.
I mean, we pretty much are at the mercy of what happens between the Fed, the State and the county.
Yes, absolutely, but it's still a goal.
Same with Great Park, we can only, you know, minimal amount of fishing, we only have two people. We, we rely on the county to do it, to sweep.
Yeah, they don't, they didn't sweep us.
No, we typically do it all. The one time that they come through, we had already picked up, it was this second, third wave, they kind of helped out with it.
Because I saw contractors on there.
They were, but they tried, I'll tell you firsthand, by the time they came through, it had already been picked up.
I'll tell you what the county was for. Wherever you look at Treasure Island, St. Pete Beach, the figures in those areas, you could walk on fish, there was so many. And that's where the county came in and that's where you get your, that's where you get some of your tax revenue back whenever they're cleaning up a disaster like that. They didn't spend a lot of time here because it was manageable and we were able to actually do it. I would most rather them be down there helping those people than coming up here and plugging fish here and fish there. But we're, we're situated in a certain way to where geographically, most of the big catastrophes it seems to be south of John's Pass, seems to be where, if I drove my boat here one day, I'm not kidding, it looked like to me the water coming out from behind my boat as I drove through it, it was big orange, I mean, it was a skimmer, it was all the way to the ocean floor and everything was orange, you couldn't see fluid at all, it was terrible. And, and that's, that's what the county's been taking care of. So, yeah, we do take care of our own in that case, but I'm sure that there's always a possibility it could be worse. So back to goal five. Judy, would you like to be objective one, the boats?
Well, I think, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, it doesn't, that's objective one, but I think it's still going to keep being, even though we can't do a whole lot besides beach nourishment, it's still easy to be a priority on our list and, and so I think it should stay on there as something we should focus on.
Okay, well, we'll leave that one on there and then we'll make the, the boats as objective two, if everybody's okay with that. I will say this is the beauty of Bellar Beach, we've, we've got goals, but they're, they're honest. And we, we don't, we don't have huge problems in this community. That's, that's one of the blessings of living here is that if you, if you put this same list in front of Clearwater or St. Petersburg or the county, it would be overwhelming. So we're very fortunate. Alright, is that a good start for you?
Yes.
Would anyone else like to add on, add on to this conversation before we move on to item number three? One, one question, alright. So we are on to item number three, please, please place up here by Mr. Roberts. Yes, discussion on maximum parking time limits, take it away, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, many of you may have received an email, a jabbering, it doesn't matter, and then that was followed up with an email.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so I actually had a phone call with him, and it just, it's just a conversation brought up my, my question, which is, I know we, it's always good to kind of like take a look at these things we've stood in place and see if we can tweak it, if it makes more sense, or just leave it the way it is. But, and I talked to a guy, and he checked on the report, and the question was, do we have too many people that are parking at Gordon Street and then once to a three-hour time limit expires, they jump in their vehicle and move it down to the marina because they can, where our system is set up. So it's three hours at each location, not three hours per period, which of course we could make that change if we felt that made more sense. We can just say, you've got three hours at either the marina, either Gordon Street or City Hall. We could do that if we felt that made sense. So the real question is, do we think that three-hour period that we decided, because I started thinking as I was talking to him, I can't really remember why specifically we're doing the three hours. So that's really the question, are we good with three hours? Do we feel like we should adjust that? Or do we feel like we should leave it at three hours for our total city till we can move to another location?
Yeah, I, I can, I can kind of recap what happened. Basically, we have limited parking for our community. We have the three, the three Bellar Shore areas, then we have Morgan Park, we have the, the marina, and then we've got here. And what people were doing was they were parking here at Gordon Way, walking across the street and filling the parking lot up. Residents of Bellar Beach were not able to find a parking spot, or so, if they hit the mooring park and they pull, well then they would have to go across the street to find a parking. And we decided that really we're, we're doing the, the minimum requirement to offer public parking for non-residents, and so...
According to...
What's that?
According to the three-hour minimum.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not saying that it's, we're just required to give public or to provide a public parking.
I think this is...
I don't, I don't think we were actually, I don't think that there was a...
This is for beach nourishment, we had so many parties, but I don't think there's a time...
That's what makes this eligible for beach nourishment. And so what happened was you had people that were, that were coming here, they were paying on a minimal fee and they were going to the beach, and the parking lot was filled... And the parking lot was filling up. And even whenever we allowed an all-day rate, or you were able to fill the meter, originally we had a limit and what was happening was, I think we had minimum three hours and then they would just walk back over and they put, they filled back up with three more hours.
Okay.
Well, we just didn't want that. And so, we tried to figure out a way to make it inconvenient to come spend a day at Ballard Beach.
If you weren't a resident?
If you were not a resident. Now, this gentleman sent the email and he said, he's a resident. And so, I responded to him and I said, "Fine, go to City Hall, pay five bucks and you can park all you want year-round." And I didn't hear another thing.
He's not a resident, I specifically asked him. You didn't say that the email, he was a resident. You used some...
He said, "The residents." He said, "The residents."
Yeah. He, he, he didn't say, like, I agree.
Right, he didn't say, "I'm a resident of Ballard Beach."
Yeah.
So, I specifically asked him, "Are you a resident of Ballard Beach?" He said...
Yeah, and I talked to him and I said, and I explained my whole thing about Beach Nourishment and us giving up Morgan Park and he, and I said, "You know, a lot of our residents don't go to the beach till 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, or lunchtime." So, he said, and he says, "Well, did you ever consider the first come, first served?" I said, "Yeah." I said, "And that's why we put the three hours in there."
Because here...
Our residents pay for the parking lot, pay for the upkeep. The only reason we open it up to the public was because it's Beach Nourishment and now we're not getting it. It's actually been on the table to pull that public park. Now, I told him, "Go down to St. Pete, park all day for five bucks."
But, you know, we look at it like, we have Sixth Street, 12th Street and 19th Street, those lots, I don't think I've ever seen.
Well, it's different, they're under a different strait and you cannot open them up ever for public parking.
No, no, I realize that, I realize that. So, Morgan Street is the one, and I did that for people that live on the Morgan Park of our city, so they want to park it, at Morgan Street, because that's where they live and some of them would like to walk and drive, because you're deep at kind of the end, you know, the coastal area, and drive there. So, now you drive there and it's full.
Right. I would say that if they're driving over anywhere, they probably should go to the St. Pete Park, just because, again, if you look at the north side, they're very low, they're nowhere to go. And I hate to say it, but they live in St. Pete and they have a giant park, thousands of parking spaces and a big, huge, wide beach.
Oh, yeah.
And it's not, it's not disintegrated, their beach is pristine from theirs.
Really?
Yeah, because they have a break wall.
They're right there.
They have a break wall protecting it, all the sand flows out and there's no water knocking it out. So, whatever, you know, we've lost ours, but they've almost kept all of theirs. It gets, it's a little thinner as you get from a little more north, but you start getting anywhere near that park and there's plenty of sand.
But, so really, my question was, is this something, I just wanted to ask you after, that we want to change the three hour to a different number, or do we want to even go further, which I guess doesn't make a lot of sense because it were, you know, it's kind of the base thing, we're telling people three hours period, so you can't move to the marina and give us more money.
I don't really have a problem with it moving to the marina and the reason why is because it's not full.
That's from City Hall.
But I don't want to give them all day parking either, so...
Right. How's our revenue, since we changed it? Still coming in?
Yeah, it's gone up.
Why is it going up?
It's gone up because we doubled the price.
Yeah.
That's why I doubled up.
But that's the only reason we can.
Right.
I mean, we're not here to serve.
It's Waterville.
I mean, I got, one of my friends came up to me, he lives in Waterville, he gets his way to drop off, not the sheriff jumped in, his wife dropped him off at Sixth Street. Sheriff said, "Hey, this is for Ballard Beach."
Yeah, right.
So, we're gonna leave it as well.
Vice Mayor Shirley, would you like to chime in on this topic?
I would agree to potentially extend it another hour, the four hours, with the caveat that we reserve two spaces for city residents like we used to at Morgan Park. Since we're not getting Beach Nourishment and they're not kicking up their end of the deal, why are we giving up all our parking?
So, right now it's a hundred percent meter?
Yeah.
How much you have a sticker?
That you, if we're not in this pool, there's no reserved spaces for Ballard Beach residents like there used to be and all we've had been until a few years back, the last Beach Nourishment.
I'm, I'm fine with leaving it alone and just keeping it the way that it is. What about, let's just do an informal survey. Frank, please. Sizzling? Wood?
So, what, what's that support is like two spots that would say Ballard Beach citizen only, or you'd like that sticker?
I don't, I think we already have an enforcement problem.
In the regular spots?
Yeah.
Six, the 12th and 19th, you could park in there.
Surely, is it okay if we just leave this one alone?
I'm still in support of taking back two spaces and I have been, it's been a big issue for me that we do not have reserved spaces for residents at Morgan Park. And I think we need to go back to that.
Okay. Well, right now, the majority says leave it alone.
I'm for the two spots. That's kind of my...
Now, we've changed, so it's a, it's a fifty-fifty.
Oh, just here. What, what Linda's at?
I think they're housing on...
Is, is Belinda?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. What's your goal?
Leave it to how we have it currently.
Leave it alone. Okay, that's better. You've been very quiet, I, you know, I thought I was talking to you at the beginning of the meeting and then, sorry.
Everybody was saying what I thought, so I just kept quiet because they heard speaking up on my behalf.
Okay, all right. Well, we will, we'll just move on on this one and right now, Vice Mayor Shirley, I'm just curious, this is purely for my own information, are we, are we completely filling the parking lot with paid, with, what's it, parking tickets? Paid parking rent?
I'm sorry, I don't really, I didn't hear what you said.
I'm just wondering, how often are you going over there now and it's completely full?
Any time on Saturday and Sunday, if you want to stop there, there's not parking for residents. And it's the only lot with facilities, so if you have small children with you, kind of important.
Do you think that it would be enforceable?
Look, it was that way for many, many years. I've been here for twenty-three, twenty-four years and it wasn't until the last Beach Nourishment we gave up all those spaces in Morgan Park.
Okay, so, do you think we could just get away with putting up two signs and call it a day?
Yeah, it's no different to what Indian Rock Beach does. They have, they have reserved spaces for their residents and you have to stick with parking those places.
On, on the question, how much would it cost for buying, like, pulling there, like, park my car, how much would a parking ticket cost?
I don't think, I don't think we could say, but it's all right now. It's probably cheaper than...
It's like fifty-five bucks, fifty dollars.
Yeah, it's probably cheaper.
Okay, so, I'm gonna pull in that parking spot, I'll pay you fifty-five dollars, okay? I'll stay there for six hours and I'd be five bucks.
If you, if you're, if, I mean, we have directives, we can issue the directive to the police to control those spots.
Right, I'm quite upset, if I get a ticket, I'm gonna stay there for five, six, seven hours and maybe...
It depends on how soon the police detect you there.
Because you don't have to tell me.
Yeah, they still want to give a ticket though, and we get one to give per day.
See, now, in those spots, we could enforce that. We could make those tollways zones...
That would be a big ticket. Well, sure, but I mean, are we gonna do that? It's insane. If I go there once, it's just more, right on the thing, I'm saying, they come here for the whole day.
Well, that would be one way to make sure that it didn't happen, that tollway zone, Ballard Beach residents home. And did this change anyone's mind?
If we do tollway, don't, Ballard Beach residents only, I think that would really mess us up for Beach Nourishment.
It would definitely bring a conflict. Even if we, even if we said Ballard Beach residents home?
Yes. It's a big public parking.
When we did the, we raised ten dollars.
It doesn't matter, it's perpetual, it's done. We never will get that back. We could never get out of those easements. Yeah, we're done. So, that being said, you're, I like your idea, Jody, but I, I think it's not doable. I think that's the problem. That's, that must be why it went away.
Yeah, I would give, I would give a whole right side to Ballard Beach residents.
Yeah, I would too.
I think that would be a good point.
They're not giving us the, I'm for the honor on their side.
It's, I agree, but, you know, once you sign something away, whether you made a bad deal or not, it's, there's really, there's no obligation on their part to continue delivering it.
I would like to see how many parking spaces we committed versus what we have out there, because that's what it is, is how many parking spaces haven't committed through the city and all the parks.
Yeah, I can provide that. I have notes, I think it was first brought up when Linda was here, but there's notes and emails, I can, I can send the documents to everyone, so if you can...
I think you can call the county, it's their, it's their easement. It's, it's, I don't, it doesn't belong to the Army Corps, it's the county that got it.
The agreement.
The, the perpetual easements are there.
Yeah, but the, the agreement that was, it specifically says that we have to provide so many parking...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm sure for signing the easement, there's something somewhere that says, "This is what you must do."
It does, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll tell you what, we'll look into it and then we'll discuss it again at the next work session, see, see if we change our minds or if we can do anything to, to help up here on that end. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right, cool.
Sounds good.
All right, now we are on to general business, so, yes?
I got some things, whenever you want. Sorry. Okay, so I put, oh, I sent an email out that was on August eighth, it was, Fort Benales reached out to me because during our comp plan review with the Plating and Thoning Board, it was brought up that some of the annual traffic counts, they were concerned that the way they did the counts, that it possibly didn't reflect our peak hours during the day when our traffic's the highest, because their counts are more focused around the commuter traffic in the county and people, members of our Plating and Thoning Board felt that our traffic patterns could possibly be different in Ballard Beach and they requested that, if possible, Fort Benales did some specific counts for Ballard Beach to, to make sure that, that it falls in line or that we get the correct information. So, Linda Fisher, whoever we know who's come presented here for our comp plan, reached out to me and asked if we do want these studies done, that we need to read our requests to the WIT Plan, he's the executive director for Fort Benales and he'd be happy to do them. So, I sent an email out to the council, trying to just get a consensus if that was agreeable to each member of the council. I heard back from three of us, and so I just wanted to bring it up, because I'm, I'm interested in doing this, because I think it's something that they will provide for us and they might give some insight into the traffic patterns here at Ballard Beach.
I, I know I'm only doing the study, however, I would greatly appreciate this city having the opportunity to agree or disagree with their ultimate decision of what they think is best for us, because they may be wanting, they may come up with a plan that we absolutely hate and don't want to, don't want to consider it, such as maybe something we've already done in the past or that didn't work out so well. Or say they come back with, "Yeah, we need to rip out this island and, and the crossbar." You know, those are some things, I think, I think I'm one of the ones who responded to it and said, "Yeah, I'm interested," but I'm sure they know we don't...
Yeah, and that was never brought up in this discussion. They were, it was, it was more along the lines of just making sure that our patterns were in line with the rest of the studies that they're doing. And if you remember in the, in the statistical section of the comp plan, it, it gave ratings on the kind of congestion of the major roads, which are Cazway Boulevard and Gulf Boulevard. And we were pretty much the worst rating and actually, I think North Gulf Boulevard, instead of an F, got like an E, it was like second to worst rating, which didn't actually line up with what you would think. So, it was kind of requested that we at least do the studies and, and see if, if they are rated that bad and take that information and try to use it to different tools. But it had nothing to do with them recommending us how we change our lanes or traffic lights or anything.
Good.
So, I heard back from Mayor, Members Livingstone and Governor Roberts.
Shame on the West.
I didn't do anything.
I'm great with it.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Roberts, you okay with the study?
Oh, yeah, I responded.
Yes.
All right, Jody?
I'm good with it, I can consider the idea of taking out one down.
All right, Belinda?
Yes, I'm still with that.
All right, Frank?
If you tell, it's, it's not gonna be a resolvable problem unless you put it subway.
Okay. All right, anything else, Mr. Reifler?
We got our insurance quote, not that, but it's thrown in today, came in late last week, got notified today. If you go through line by line, you start with the general liability coverage, that's increased, our premium went up seventeen percent, the cyber liability was only five percent, the auto liability coverage went up twelve, the auto physical damage coverage went up four, the big one, like, projected was the property coverage that went up ninety-eight percent. So, you know, we, we planned on seventy-five, that actually went a little higher. Workers' compensation actually just went up one percent. So, overall, our total premium went up forty-four percent. It is close to what we budgeted based on how we spread out ten percent on certain line items and seventy-five percent on property, but this is, this is the vote and they provided some material with some explanation, but they, I did talk to Representative from the Florida Cities and she is willing to come and answer questions and talk about it and I feel, you know...
We should probably take her upon it.
Just to bring everyone, you know, give an explanation, I think they, they feel it's justified and they care and, you know, they're offering to answer questions.
I'm sure that Mr. Baker has plenty of questions, considerations.
This space become almost unbearable to live? I mean, I don't know, here's the, everything, I just read that lawsuit again today, it's a lot and I talked to that woman, she said, she called me, she come in here too with her. She told me she'd come in here too with her. She's saying no rise in costs of materials and everything like that. Yeah, it's true, but how do you explain 98%? Okay, a two by four isn't 98% higher than it was two by four. This is, this is price gouging 101. I mean, I, I told Laura State Rep, she has gotten back to me on the wind insurance and everything like that. It's just, it's coming in, come. I mean, some of these prices are going down and these rates are just keep going through the roof.
What I can tell you is that insurance is one of the number one priorities of the league of cities and also with the Florida League of Mayors, the Sun Coast League of Cities. Everybody's, everybody's hurting in the same way and so.
You got 40% of the area answered that, picking up insurance.
Yeah.
And I don't know how a new homeowner buys a home here unless they have such deep pockets because your insurance bill is going to be, if you live on the beach, it's going to be $1,500 minimum, just minimum, a month, more than your house bill. Yeah, and then you're, I'm not talking about taxes or anything else. I mean, it's just, and, and I, and I've had state reps say to me, oh, this is going to kill the property. And that's going to kill us because we rely on the taxpayers.
Yeah. So I need an answer. What's, what's the solution? I don't think that there is one. Not a, not anything that I can.
I don't know, you have to keep the legal order.
So the, the explanation I got was it kind of got a double hit when it came to last year being when they re-surveyed our assets, they did it in a five year, every five years they surveyed the assets. So we kind of were up for the, what did you guys get down that we got to insure? So that kind of hit us at the same time that we had these storms that hit Florida, that caused a lot of damage and they're seeing claims through the roof. And another factor is they are offering a specific asset service per asset and also a blanket coverage. And I guess in some of the situations in the cities that got hit, they had specific asset coverage, they weren't updated enough where they had the proper insurance to cover what, what hit them. So they, Florida League of Cities, I guess, decided through that that they were going to cover all city municipalities with blanket coverage to, in the future prevent that from happening.
Well, what I'd like to ask her if she came here is, you know, this is property insurance, okay? So if a storm hits, okay, wind, we have to have a wind insurance policy, we have to have hurricane, flood insurance policy. They would say, that's not our responsibility, okay? It's property, go see your flood, go see your wind, all right? But they're still gouging the hell out of us, just like, just like the typical homeowners. You know, no one's explaining this to me saying, well, yeah, we have bad storms. Yes, we do, but you don't pay out on those bad storms. Now you jump on the bandwagon of the, you jump on the bandwagon of FEMA and you jump on the bandwagon of citizens or whatever like that. But you're not showing the actual payout cost is what I'm saying, because of these damages. Now, sure, there's going to be a lot of people waiting up their homes that just have homeowners insurance to deal with. A flood's going to come in and, well, that's fire risk. Is that insurance fraud? Absolutely, but that's the way people work. But that hasn't been, that hasn't been the factor to us. It's just, really, there's no need to this, that saying that this is actually what this costs and this money creates, is raised on this. And what we're going to do, we're not paying insurance.
Well, we did, we talked to the other.
I know.
You have seen some.
I applaud you for doing all.
I will say that, so whenever I was walking around at the league of cities, I, I had this, it was a bunch of riddles for all the programs that we participate in and the different classes I take. Yeah, it was a little bit embarrassing because there were some people that had like two, you know? But what I did notice was the very first one, I believe, was, was FMIT. And not everybody there had that, was wearing that ribbon. And so that tells me that not everybody's using the league of cities insurance. And it's probably in our best interest to reach out for other clubs just to see.
I spoke to an Eric Clark and he's with FMIT, he has been a double percentage rates for all the other cities in New Ross, they're not covering, not covering FMIT, they're in. And I think you know, one of us is Bella Shore. So you're right.
Yeah.
A lot of them are. And I think you said we had some, we gave circumstances where people have went on the writers right now. Maybe they'll clear up in the future.
Well, they just told me that they, they knew they couldn't compete right now with that one, right?
Well, and that's, I mean, their, their way of, it's just a giant, a giant pool of money that they're collecting in their self insurance, is what they're doing. They're, they're not any, I don't believe they're any pro-pro per, I think they're in it to cover their butt and make sure that in the event we have something like what happened down south, they have the money to cover us. But I would always, you know, be willing to look at other quotes if they were cheaper and, and had the same coverage that we had in, in, but it's ugly. I'm paid, one of my insurance is tomorrow, I always ask them on, yeah. Just pay them one.
So I'll try, I'll try to get it to become Tuesday, Monday.
Who is it?
Lindsay Joel. And she's the account executive of West Florida. I think she recently.
And you've got some other information that you can get to us? Looks like you had some other papers there that were.
These ones provided. These are just, what I did is I have the, the voices that I calculated the percentage of increase per line of. But I can provide what you'd like. Just a quick, we respond back to the New Ross, beach's not covered, shore's not covered, Old West did not cover, Bay Area Beach not covered, Bella Shore's experience of 90% probably covered.
Not covered by this group.
Everyone I say is not covered, only yes, Bella Shore discovered the issues. The other, the other ones had problems, or somebody else.
Okay, well, something there may be possible that one stop shopping is not into our advantage.
We can do a quick, a closer reading possible to find out. I think it's the other.
You know what the, the problem is, if you leave there and you go to a little one, are they going to gouge you?
I've seen companies, they, they riddle you in one year and nail you the next year or even worse, cancel you.
Right, that's, that's the other theory.
I will say you will have to worry about it with these guys. Because they, our interest is, the league of cities is a very healthy. Anything else you'd like to add? Jody or Belinda, would you like to say anything, make a comment on the insurance situation?
I have nothing to add, Mrs. Jody. Clearly, insurance rates are going up, I don't care what segment of business you're in and that's just the time we're in right now.
Things are tough all over. Okay, if there are no other comments.
Motion.
On that, I'm not finished yet. All right, we're still under general business. So I'm, did you have anything else, by the way?
Just want to update, we have, the deadline for the RFP is going to be this Friday at 2:00 PM. I have, I'll immediately download the proposals and send them out. I have, we have three members on the evaluation committee, myself, fee services administrator and the chair of the assistance advisory committee, Monty Gang. We're going to review that while I'm peddling, they're going to meet on Monday. Kind of got to see, play it in here, see what comes in. And, you know, you know, we're on our kind of time front here, so we're, we're valuing a bigger recommendation for negotiation to council. I did reach out to lease management and got a one month proposal to extend it. Our current contract rate plus the 4% CPI and tipping fee increase for, which is minimal for October, takes us up as currently our contract ends the, December, but now takes us to October, you know, it pretty much the same rate by this time. But if need be, I'll, I'll bring that to the September council meeting for approval by council just so we get it done.
All right, cool. All right, that's it. I spoke with Wendy Grimes today and the election capital headquarters in Nellis and just asked some general questions. Hey, correct me if I get these numbers wrong, but whenever our election aligns with a large election, we're roughly running $1,376 per election, okay? If our election falls on odd cycles where we lose a few municipalities and, and they're really just doing it for us, our elections are almost $4,000. So there's a substantial cost savings, not only by aligning with the general and the midterm elections, but also we would reduce the number of elections we have. So rather than two every six years, it would be two every eight years if we, if we made this change. So I wanted to give you that information and give you some more to think about. Also, the next eleven, the next election is March the 19th. So if we decided to move forward with this, it would, we would have to have the plan and the language turned in to Nellis County on December the 19th. So before I, I go around the room for opinions on this, I wanted to give Rainey the opportunity to kind of speak his mind on what it would look like to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as what it would take to move forward, we would do an ordinance that would stick call for the issue election with a resolution setting forth the ballot language to accompany that. And so I would, I would draft and prepare that. I, I have begun the process of, one of the questions that was posed at the last workshop was a meeting on, or rather a memo on what you can and can't do in that process in terms of advocacy. During the 2022 election year, they changed what a city can pay money for or contribute towards in the ways of advocacy on issue elections, substantially limiting it. And so I'm trying to write that for you as well. But as far, from where I sit, it's really just, you know, what are my marching orders? Where we left last time was there was a general consensus to move in this direction, but people would sort of let it marinate and see if that changed in the interval. As far as from where I sit, I believe I have, I was waiting in part for this meeting, but I believe I have general, or rather the August to September meetings. We would have a hearing in October, a hearing in November and send it to them and, and send it to them with ballot language for the December hearing, December deadline. But I'd want to have that process done cleanly in November, that way if we needed to redo anything before the December 19th, we also have the vet of, oops, we got to fix this.
Okay, so I, I gave an assignment to the council to speak to constituents and see what the general feel was of the public. If they thought it was a good idea, a bad idea. I, I have had a few people say they didn't like the idea, but it's the same people that don't like anything. So I realize that's going to happen and I have to, just because you, sometimes I have to, I have to weigh which, what they're really thinking or I even need to take their opinion into consideration. Everybody here that votes has an opinion and so I try to not form my own opinion about their overall, what their motive was. But I had, personally, I had very good responses whenever I spoke to people around the community. I spoke to probably 30 people and I had numerous emails and phone calls and whatever and I think they all liked the idea. But I wanted to see what everybody else, what your feelings were, if you were serious about this or if it's lost, it's lost or it's raw.
I think it makes sense, I did talk to several people, not 100. But most people felt specifically aligning with the general election in the midterms absolutely makes sense.
And so we were, what we were talking about, just a quick refresher, moving from three years to four years, aligning with the general and midterm elections, reduction of council members from seven to five and increase of terms by one additional term. And so what that would do is if you were newly elected, you could serve up to 12 years before you would term out and then you would have to go back, do, take a year off and then, or it now would be two years that you would have to be required to take off and then you could come back and, and do it again if you wanted to.
And to be clear, to add clarity to that, what you're talking about is putting that to the voters. That would go to the voters in terms of the charter referendum, it's not, if you're saying here that like I'm in favor of that being put to the voters, it's not so much, I am voting this won't happen.
Correct, and that is one of the, one of the disinformation campaigns that's going on out there is that certain people think that we're dictating this and, and that's not the case. We're just giving the public the option to say, yes, they like this idea and they want the city to move forward or no, they don't and we keep things the way that they are. So Leslie?
I would be in favor of moving forward.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Same answer as I did at the last one session, I'm in favor of moving forward. I'm not a huge fan of the free time.
Okay, all right. Ms. Livingstone?
I'm in favor of moving forward.
All right. And Mr. Roberts? He's not here. Mr. Baker?
Keeping the status quo, I think 12 years is long, it's become a dictator.
Fair enough. All right, well, I was, I was really hoping Mr. Roberts would have been here too.
Zabel.
Mr. Zabel. I'm all the age now, yeah, it's, it's, no wonder, it's almost 9:30. Okay, so yeah, I would still like to hear Mr. Zabel's comments, but I guess we'll do that next time. So the question is, is do we want to move forward and, and get started immediately with drafting this up?
We'll plan to draft it up.
Okay, good deal. I don't have anything else. Last call, if anyone would like to add anything.
Is there a question, so what was the status of the full time? I made an offer they accepted today. Keep here.
Two to three weeks.
Okay. Well, if nothing else.
Motion.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? All right.
Motion's up for you.
All in favor?
I.